Good evening, I thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank Burke Cunningham who organized the Romeo Chapter of the 47th Division Association of Veterans Day Observants and Re-Placement which will take place on Saturday the 5th at the Maple Run. I also want to thank former Mayor Frank Couches and Jack LeBry, Altria Man, who on behalf of the William Raffeter Post and American Digital Delivery Unit organized the Veterans Day Ceremonies which held on Friday November 11th and convened in the library due to the current weather. These ceremonies were very moving and on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Village Residents, I'd like to give a special thanks to all of our veterans. I would also like to thank our village staff who made these ceremonies possible. I also want to wish to thank members of the St. Paul's Committee for yet another excellent town hall presentation last night. I encourage all residents to visit the St. Paul's website to see the potential concepts researched by the committee to date. And now the call on to the department heads. You're going to be Commissioner Jackson, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, next week we have the Turkey Trot. There'll be several roads closed anywhere from the high school all the way down by the Adelphi area, so if you are between 8:00 and 12:00, some of your plans just make arrangements. It gets a little congested, the race does span out pretty well during that time. Also, I just want to remind people, I know I said it last month and I believe you're having your column this month, we, still burbies are going on all around us, so please, it's darker earlier, keep your lights on, your alarms on if you have them, radios, everything else, the burbies are happening in all of the precincts, so please, if you have these items, or you know, please, I'll leave them on. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. The department has nothing on the formal agenda, however, I'd like to give a few points to everyone's attention. In the month of October, the department responded to 152 total alarms. 140 were signaling, are lesser alarms, eight of which were general alarms, one adjudication call and three mutually calls to surrounding departments. Just as the Commissioner mentioned, next week is Thanksgiving. It is one of the busier days of the year in the fire service. We are asking all residents to take caution when cooking. If you're going to deep fry turkey, please do it outside away from any building. If you're going to cook for a large group of people, please do not leave any ovens or stove tops unattended. Please keep children away from the, please leave children away from the kitchen as best as you can. And if there's anything that anyone notices throughout the day, please notify the fire department immediately. Other than that, happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you.
Good thing I don't cook. I'm great at eating, though.
Next, Treasury, remove, she is on Zoom.
Yes, Irene.
Yes, standing here, I'm here, please. On your desk, uh, me, I'm at number one, in conversation of somebody's syndrome, uh, one of the patients is a public student of the year, 4,100, 136,000, they're being passed from the year of a complicated accident, uh, for two employees who have left their experience in the public work, public works department. Uh, and I don't have a, even ten, four, five, the classified building administrator for overtime, uh, started in third, uh, by the employees who attend the boardroom.
Is that it, Irene? Irene, did we lose you or are you finished?
I, I, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I don't know what to say.
Oh. Irene, did you say you finished?
Uh, hold on, please, really?
Yes, were you finished?
Okay, yeah, I'm, uh, I spoke to all, I'm number two, right there.
Yes, we did.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have on my desk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, Village Secretary Josephine June.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Trustees. The Village Department does not have anything on the agenda tonight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if the Board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Josephine. Recreation, Commissioner Paul Lake, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everybody. Recreation has two items on the agenda this evening and both are on the same subject, which is trees. Item number 18 is to authorize our fall planting. Uh, we are asking that you were, we made the Northport Tree Corporation, they were the low bidder at $41,104. This represents the planting of 122 trees. Item number 19 is the removal of trees, removal and pruning. We are requesting authorization to award the bid to Dom's Lawnmaker, of Port Washington, the low bidder at a cost of $191,020. This is substantially higher than we had anticipated, and that is mainly because this is the first batch removal of large ash trees in the village. Uh, we're going after the largest, most dangerous trees on the main thoroughfares, and I believe we have 114 ash trees coming down in this contract. We will probably be going out for another similar size contract in the fall of this coming year. And that's all we have on the agenda. I'll be happy to answer any questions that one may have.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Mary Fishburg, please.
Good evening, Mayor. We have nothing on the agenda, uh, I thank you. We're still working on trying to tie up a loose sentence of that 1,200 Franklin Avenue lease, uh, we're getting very close to it.
Thank you. Ralph Swasey, Village Minister, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, members of the public. Mayor, the, under the village administration, we have item number nine, H-GAC Bi-Cooperative Person Program. Board of Trustees requested the village to join the H-GAC Bi-Cooperative Person Program. Membership is free, and this cooperative qualifies under the New York State Piggyback Law, Mr. Fishburg, you have actual code number, but they call it Piggyback Law, that allows municipalities to piggyback off of other competitive, competitive league bid contracts at reply with the law. This cooperative was brought my attention by the Fire Chiefs with regard to their anticipated future purchase of a new engine. The H-GAC Bi-Cooperative also includes many of, of the same non-fire department items that we might purchase off the New York State contract. But this is not the only cooperative the village has members with, this is the one we want to join now. The library, uh, the Board of Trustees requested to authorize the library to engage the services of Securita Security Services for the period of January 9th, 2023, through January, January 10th, 2023, I think it is, I'm sorry, through January 9th, 2024, subject to the village's council as a form. The cost is approximately $125,500. And this is a budget, operating budget. Under Public Works, item number 12, uh, Garden City Public Library Children's Room renovation, authorization requests to approve the following change orders. Last meeting, we approved change order one, this is two through nine. Number two is to install sound blanking and new gypsum in the boardroom wall adjacent to the restroom, at a cost of $4,214.31. Change order number three is to install gypsum board at channel along West Sea, new wall and stacks and reading room areas at a cost of $5,399.36. Change order number four is for door number four bent and soil on relocation at a cost of $9,216.90. Change order number five is actually credit for interior partitions, they want to switch from a half inch laminated to a half inch temporary glass, which reduces the original cost of this award contract from $963,125 to $941,125 for a credit amount of $22,000. Change order number six is for interior partition door number two overhead stop and lock at a cost of $827.10. Change order number seven is for the relocation of the LPA electric panel at a cost of $636.69. Change order number eight, this is for removal of baseboard heat in the workshop room at a cost of $2,629.31. And finally, change order number nine is to install a stud wall and chips out of home existing, new wall and circulation office at a cost of $2,819.64. With this credit applied, the change orders amount to over $3,000. It's covered by a contingent, the amount awarded in the preferred construction contract, which is at a $10,000. So there's still remaining about $6,600 if any more change orders come down. Item number 13, there's a firehouse design, order authorization is requested to approve proposals submitted by previous architects for architectural design development of the GCHB Firehouse Station number two for a cost of $92,830. Item number 14 is the, uh, replacement of a position in the Public Works Department, Street Department. We want to move on, we want to maintain a position to the, um, Street Department budget, and we'll replace a labor position with that upgrade. This is to, um, reduce the overtime. We have, that problem is hard to fill, we use a lot of overtime, yes, we'll save us substantial money, uh, close to, uh, $20,000, $30,000, if not more. Fifteen, the Negro Avenue Traffic Study. Order authorization is requested to transfer $8,000 to Engineered Contractual Services from contingent for the Negro Avenue Traffic Study. This is touched upon momentarily in the previous Traffic Commission meeting. I had number the county, I also had Mr. Fosseado there from Great Manning, uh, one of the updateers on the Negro Avenue Diet Study, they wanted, they had concerns about the, uh, the New York State traffic light located at Hempstead Turnpike, which is a, which, which is two lanes north-south that marries up to our four lanes on the Negro north-south. They had concerns of backing up, uh, so they asked Great Manning to do some additional work, uh, to, um, give them additional information so they can calm their fears about, uh, traffic backing up on the Negro Avenue. So, order authorization is requested to transfer $8,000 to Contractual Services, um, Engineering Contractual Services from contingent, and also to award, um, the approvals of the little change order number one for this traffic study to Great Manning. Item number 16, um, number Street Traffic Con study, order authorization is requested for the transfer of $4,700 to Engineering Contractual Services from contingent for the number Street Traffic Con Study and to award to Great Manning. This item is a derivative of the 1027 item regarding buying speed humps, temporary speed humps that we placed on Fourth Street and in other locations, um, where it's warranted that we're going to try to calm traffic. And the final is on word bids, the spools of grass leaves brushing yardways, uh, order authorization is requested to award it to the Audi, the Audi Excite and Company Corporation, the only bidder, provides we work on has any basis on unit costs. So we're picking up all of these right now. Those leaves traditionally gone to the mulch field in DWR, and they've sat there for years, uh, just slowly deteriorating on the mulch, does not get picked up by commercial people or area residents. A couple of years ago, decided to remove that mulch, uh, and then last year we removed all the dry leaves, which is much cheaper to remove because it's dry and it's cheap design, it's not, uh, it's heavy, so this is to get rid of this year's leaves as well. That's all I have on the agenda. I just want to mention, Mayor, though, that there are items listed on the Board of Trustees, items four through eight, which are not my direct items, but I think they warrant some discussion and I'd be happy to participate if any questions come up.
Ralph, quick question. Uh, one of the residents brought my attention, I guess on Garden Street, I think our subcontractor does the leaves and so on, on the island, not the sidewalks, not the...
They probably blow the leaves off of the island.
Yeah, so are they supposed to pick it up this time?
No, what happens is, um, we have leaf crews out, they move from west to east, and they go back from west to east, they try to do three times before the snow season, God forbid, and, uh, so they blow them off and leave them in piles, and our crews pick them up with our back end.
Do they coordinate with our crews? Because, uh, I guess, uh, one of the residents was driving down Garden and, because of the storm, probably, all the leaves from the houses in a gutter, and then the leaves from the island in the street, so it was like a narrow path. Just curious, I'm not complaining, just curious.
I'm not, coordination, I'll, I'll toss that to Paul because I think his supervisor might.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah, Trustee O'Brien, for the last two years, we have assigned one of our parks supervisor, Tom Gordon, to shadow the con-kell crews, and he coordinates when they blow the leaves in the street. We try to get a girdy out there as quick as we can and pick them up. The issue this year is we're a little shorthanded on CDL drivers, and we're falling a little bit behind. We normally have three girdys out all the time, four on weekends, this year we only have two out, so we're running a little behind, but we will get the leaves picked up, we try to make sure there's no dangerous situation, but it's a big village and there's a lot of leaves coming down.
I know, especially later with that bad storm, so.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not complaining, I feel maybe we should look at it.
Well, it takes a look.
Stay on this for one second. Item number 17, really cross, what is it? You got an idea?
Uh, we, we, we budgeted, um, we budgeted a neighborhood of $300,000, I believe it's going to be, last year we moved, we removed a lot and more, so I think it's going to be about $225, max, but I don't know.
There's less than last year.
It should be less than last year because last year we moved a lot of the old wet stuff. I just don't have a break down how much of that money was old and how much was the current season.
That's still only $225, $225,000?
Yeah, we, I, I, I don't have the budget in front of me, but we, two years, two budgets ago, we budgeted, I think, close to $450,000. Last year we had a purchase order for about, uh, $300, $350, we used like $225, $250, so I anticipate that'll be at all park, probably a little less.
Does anyone have other questions or comments?
Oh, I have one. Another leaf issue. My leaf issue is...
You're not going to leave me alone, huh?
No, not going to leave you alone. Stop leaving, stop leaving me out. All right, so sanitation, cleaning leaves on Fourth Street, uh, it happened today that the leaves were cleaned after a few complaints were made, but my request is simply that, um, the leaf removal on Fourth Street be coordinated with the, uh, school schedule. What has been happening is the leaf crews arrive, when drop-off or pickup is going on, they throw their hands up and ride away. And what you happens is you have a huge collection of leaves, which make parking dangerous and so on and so forth. So if we can just have the schedule, uh, made so that Fourth Street between Franklin and Hilton is clean, not at pickup and drop-off, maybe in the middle of the day, I think that would end this issue.
So I'll make the general highways supervisor aware of that, it's probably something true at all the schools, not just the public school.
I have other comments, that's my only leaf comment.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with regards to item number 13, I believe, um, that there was a little lack of coordination, which I apologize for. And the proposal for Firehouse Two had two components to it. One was to do the work on the existing building, and one was to do the work in the event that a ancillary structure to accommodate a ladder truck was to be built. So for instance, when it went out to bid, um, the bid that came in was segregated by two components, but unfortunately, the agenda item got the aggregate cost and not the separated cost. Accordingly, um, it would be my recommendation that the amount budgeted for, uh, the process would in fact be $36,560 instead of the $92,000 because, uh, it is my recommendation that there be no budgeting for the additional structure to accommodate the ladder truck. That's my understanding.
I have a question for Chief Burn. The program that was issued as part of the RFP, did it include the need for a ladder truck?
Uh, to follow up to what the Commissioner mentioned, we, there was two phases. It was to rehab the current structure and then have the possibility of adding a structure to the side of it later on.
Good. Let's, let's put, is that, is that clear?
That's correct, Mayor.
And trustee Torino, the, with the amendment of the price, this would now be limited to renovations of the existing building and no work that was in preparation for any expansion or anything like that?
That is my understanding. When it came in, I did send out an email to the village and the whole of trustees on November 10th. Obviously, my email was not as explicit as it should have been, but yes, it is only for the renovation of the existing building and not for any ancillary structures, nor was it for, or intended to be, for any work to be done on any existing units in the future. So the answer to that question is simply yes, only the building.
Thank you.
Do we have to remove it from the consent calendar and then pass it separately with the amendment? I'll, I'll remove it from the consent calendar, number 13. The vote is, is not accurate enough for further discussion.
36,500.
Can we just modify you now? Can we amend, can we amend it?
I think, counsel, I think, so we know that.
We should remove it.
Okay. So you modify for a few votes, is that how it goes?
We'll do that at the end of the...
Oh, at the end, I'm sorry.
Remove from the consent calendar, we then...
Right, for discussion.
Okay, just want to be clear, now I got it, thank you.
And while we're on that topic, I ask that item number six be removed, which is the handrail. And there are certain issues with regards to putting a handrail there, um, starting off with, do we have the right, is it our land?
It is.
Definitely?
Yes, I've discussed it with the Commissioner, the entire area is ours going over to the other stop sign, going all the way over to the, what is it, the front edge of the buildings on the railroad avenue.
It's in, it's in village jurisdiction. Uh, I don't know, all of that piece of land, but it's in village jurisdiction.
So, uh, trustee Kelly, so we could do work underneath that bridge if we wanted to, I didn't quite get that impression when meeting with them.
You what?
We could do work if we wanted to put a rail again underneath the detonator, the bridge.
Would you want to remove it for discussion?
Yeah, I don't know why, you want to remove it for discussion? I don't know why we can't put it in that area is under our jurisdiction. We have plenty of residents who live on the other side of the railroad tracks on Atlantic Avenue. Uh, if, if you want to have it referred to the, to have an RFP produced, obviously, village employees can consult to find out. I, I don't think it's a, it may be a question, but in people's minds as to whether we can put in a handrail on a sidewalk in the village, but it's not a question in my mind. What question do you want answered? Whether we own the property?
Well, we own the property underneath the bridge.
Well, I'm surprised that the people who've been working on this don't know the answer to that question, but my understanding is, it's within the village jurisdiction, uh, for the police, and are you suggesting we don't own the land under the bridge because although we have the authority to issue a permit to do work on the bridge?
Well, they own the bridge, but I guess you're right, since we did authorize them to do it, and we gave them a permit, I, I guess we would have the option to do that.
It's a substantial, it's an RFP that's going to take time to produce anyway, because Commissioner Jackson has advised me that because there are historically some accidents, unusual to have an accident in the bridge, you have to have significant protection for the pedestrians and bicyclists on that sidewalk, and we know from studies last fall, I know, that there are many residents on Atlantic Avenue who have children coming over to school in the morning.
Right.
On bicycles, Commissioner Jackson has indicated there's a significant number of joggers who use it, and that there's pedestrians who use it, so there's a lot of activity on an unprotected sidewalk in the village. Sidewalks generally have a lot of clearance, ground clearance from the cars. Here, we have a sidewalk that abuts the roadway with no protection for the bicyclists or pedestrians, and that was the reason that the Traffic Commission wanted to look into this when we were looking into the whole stop sign issue, which I think we reached a resolution at the Traffic Commission meeting earlier in the night. We wanted to resolve this issue of how to protect the pedestrians and bicyclists, and I think, as Commissioner Jackson has suggested, it can't be a regular guard rail or, that's why I put in substantial guard rail, because we have to protect from that rare incident where there's a collision under the bridge that could spill over into the pedestrian area. So that's something for buildings and, uh, the village employees to hammer out in terms of what would be safe to protect, but right now, we have no protection.
No, I, I could see that, I think we had discussions with the railroad MTA about it, it was the mayor and deputy mayor, remember, we really didn't want the sidewalk put in there, but it was a requirement, they said, that they had to put the sidewalk in there.
So, let me just add, we wanted to put in protection.
Yes, we did.
And then, we talked about putting in bollards, we talked about...
Right.
There are utilities there now, there are details of the difference that we anticipate. I think Ralph has definitely worked on this for...
Quite a lot, quite a lot.
You know all about this. I think you can bring some more information to the table.
So, from a historic standpoint, trustee Chestnut's absolutely right, Mayor, you remember these conversations, we didn't agree with the sidewalk, but nonetheless, because of the connection to pedestrian activities in the area of Park, the homes on Atlantic, they insisted it be there. We said, you have a sidewalk in there, please protect the sidewalk with bollards, and bollards can stop a vehicle doing 75 miles per hour. They said, no, because there's a drainage conduit in there. The drainage conduit, we believe, is very close to the curb line, there are little tolerance to make a mistake there. So I do agree with there being safety measures there. They said it does not, their engineering firms does not require the state code, the railroad, uh, and the 3TC did not put it in. So nonetheless, here we are. If we were to put these, the, and what, they wouldn't put a fence up either, a fence of low substance might keep a pedestrian from falling into a car, but it won't stop a car falling into pedestrian. So you do need something of substance there. The thing is, to put something of substance in there, we probably have to remove the sidewalk, and so we can see, we don't want to damage the utility there, because we do have to the old road and we have each other. The other thing is, I wanted to mention to the board while we're on this topic, is that, uh, this Denton Avenue Bridge, all the cars going through it, uh, start from a stop position, but there, there are at least two locations in the village where almost every sidewalk has cars going alongside it, separate by the utility, but in particular, there are circumstances very similar to this at Cunyall Press, Chestnut Street, which is a train station and a neighborhood of pedestrian area, just a situation neighborhood, and also by the middle school, uh, there's a sidewalk on the, the east side of the street or the south downside, where you have cars running 30 miles per hour with no protection at all. And, uh, I think that if we had to do a study for Denton Avenue, we, the Board would want to consider that we could fill the two areas as well, because, uh, Denton Avenue from, this catch missus difference, it's a long one-way tunnel. Cunyall Press has two lanes and you have four lanes over at Cherry Valley, plus vehicles moving at 30 miles per hour, and I think that, uh, both pedestrians and these areas are all equally risked.
According to the regard to item number six, I believe that if we take it off the calendar, uh, the substitute resolution would be to direct that the Building Department and the Department of Public Works interface to determine what is the substructures and how in fact we would be able to accommodate, uh, a railing or protection of one sort or another. While the resolution before says a sturdy railing, uh, that's not as technical as I would prefer, and so...
Well, it says substantial.
Substantial.
Right. I don't use the word sturdy.
Well, that's substantial. Um, I didn't see that in the manual of Traffic Control Vehicles, um, so the situation really... So the situation really then comes, what in fact can we put there? And how do we achieve the objectives of protecting those individuals from utilizing?
Can we add to that, what Ralph brought up, on the other two locations?
Yeah, Chestnut Street, and what's the other one?
Particularly by the middle school.
By the middle school, middle school's particularly, it's probably the most dangerous area.
Yeah, let's include the three areas. Chestnut Street, there's a sidewalk, Chestnut, and there's no protection.
There's a guardrail there.
There's a guardrail.
There's a guardrail, the conus, but the guardrail is not a protective device, it appears to be, gives you false sense of safety. A car will ride through that, if a car happens to hit it just right, it's not going into the sidewalk involved, but it's not, it's not a bollard, it's not meant to stop a moving vehicle. So the other thing is, Mr. Vassalotti in previous meetings, I don't know if you see it tonight.
Hi.
He's brought up the fact that on the west side of Cherry Valley, there's a sidewalk that turns on the north end by Cathedral, and it's going all the way to Sticks. We have talked to the county about this, we asked them, I called them about this, we asked them if they would put a crosswalk in across from the Delphi side to the Cathedral side, and then we would build, we asked them if they'd build a sidewalk, should I say now? We'll put the sidewalk in, so we're having a sidewalk design on the other side as well that would go up past the administration building, you can enter that sidewalk on the southern side of Cathedral, so you have full pedestrian access to both sides of the street. There is no now, there is just parts of it going right now, so that's the capital project for next year, this wall on the top.
If that sidewalk would only be there, it wouldn't go underneath, because there is no, there is no sidewalk on that side of the road going underneath.
Right, but there's a traffic light at Sixth Street, so we'd like to, there's traffic signals there for pedestrians crossing, we'd like to build an official ADA compliant ramp, and once they tell us where it will be, we're designing a concrete sidewalk that'll go all the way back to the one that just stops.
That just ends.
Right, and this way you have a full path all the way to downtown, and so the county can care of the crosswalk and the, because they have some signaling devices, they'll take care of that and look into the straight line. But if we're going to do a design over there for some bollard protection, we can incorporate that into the capital project.
So is that a capital project that's on for next year, or something that we should consider?
We're designing it now so we can get some cost estimates, so we can put it into the budget for next year's capital project.
Just wanted to add to Mr. Swazey's comment, that guardrail that's on Chestnut is only on the west side, only on the turning side, it doesn't go underneath the other case.
Oh, it does not? It does not?
It does not.
Yeah, that's right, I thought it was nothing, there's no protection underneath that bridge.
No protection.
Thanks for bringing that up, because that's always been strange.
It's important to address one, but it's possible.
Let's look into all three, consistent with trustee Toreno's suggestion.
Absolutely.
And I would like to make sure that we understand who owns the property, it's a valid railroad right of way, do we have jurisdiction of here, so not, please make sure.
Yes.
So that's number six. So number six is off the calendar, and that modification is made, and that request is made.
Yeah, it would be from all of the past.
Yeah, are there any other comments or questions?
I'm joining it, also remove number four on the consent calendar for discussion.
And if I could also, trustee Kelly, I sent an email on this, I believe that Mrs. Wu and Commissioner Jackson wanted to just speak about, I don't know, five and seven, I believe seven is.
Let's remove five and seven from the calendar for discussion purposes, because there are different parts of those two that people want to talk about. Before we finish with trustee comments, did anything ever happen with the request to clean the graffiti off the St. Paul's building in preparation for the turkey trot, particularly the graffiti that's above the center front piece?
Maintenance division was dispatched to do that earlier this week.
And do you think it's been done?
If it hasn't been done, it will be done before the turkey trot, yeah.
Okay, because when I checked it, because we had exchanged a bunch of emails, and then when I checked it a week later, I didn't see any change, and it would just be nice if there was no graffiti on the front piece during the, for the turkey trot.
They were told to get it done before the turkey trots.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And then we had one other thing from the traffic commission, village council, we wanted an opinion as to whether or not the village has the right to put up signs on county road intersections, such as no right turn signs. So if you can just get us an email on that, that would be great. Thank you. No right on reds, things like that, can we put those up to protect? Oh, and I'm sorry, and also remarking on the street, can we put in those left turn arrows on county roads? Thank you.
Maybe we should provide the intersections, does that, I don't know, White Park Road's different from the others, Stewart Avenue.
Yes, New White Park and Stewart Avenue, we want to put in no right turn on red signs on that, and then.
Now the signal.
Yeah, the signal.
But the other, the middle school there, the.
As you go up the hill on Stewart, as you go up that hill, you have the administration building on your right, we want to put left turn arrows in the roadway, two more of them. There's one there at the light.
It doesn't give a V, yeah.
It doesn't give anybody notice.
There's one there, I recommend at least two more.
So that's the question, can we put in two more?
Who put in those arrows originally?
We believe the county put the first arrow in.
Yeah, but generally speaking, traffic control devices, and all these things that you wrote about, are, are we traffic control devices, are the responsibility or have we done by the village?
All right.
Well, just to check.
Yeah, just double checking the center of something, and then we can start making those changes if we have the authority to do that. Any further comments, trustees? Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments on the general items, please, on the general items? Please come up to the microphone, state your name, and then.
Hello, yeah, Robert Vassalotti, 32 Brixton, and so this comment is about the railings, the substantial railings at these underpasses, and thank you for mentioning that I called out that area before, good evening, everyone. So I'm very much in favor of all these protective railings at these sites, and the one under Cherry Valley is particularly weird. When you ride a bike under there, go on that sidewalk, all of a sudden you feel like you're being thrown out into the traffic a bit as you go under it, the way they designed their walkway. So I think railings are really important. I can see a small child, you know, losing control of a bike falling into the road or something like that, so these railings are really important. The one that's not being mentioned, this is why I kind of jumped up to the podium here, is Nassau Boulevard. And that particular underpass is, had two substantial new railings put in just before this Maryland project started, and they were very substantial railings on both sides, east and west, as you go under the underpass. When they started the project, they took both railings off and put temporary fencing up. The one side they brought it back, and the other side is still temporary fencing. So I don't know where it went, and why it's not back. I don't know who put the railing up to begin with, it might have been the county originally, a couple of years before the project, and I remember saying, oh, if I put railings, now they're taking them off. Okay, so that needs to be looked at as well. And one thing there at Nassau is that those railings do not extend from corner to corner. If you look at it, it should go from, I guess, the north side, which is Atlantic by 711, all the way to Maryland, and it should go corner to corner, but somehow they end and short.
You told me about.
Nassau Boulevard.
Yeah, but you did not tell me about the Nassau Boulevard station, you told me about Maryland Avenue station.
Yeah, Maryland Avenue by 711, the other pass, the other pass.
Now I know where you are.
Correct, correct. Sorry, yeah, the Nassau Boulevard.
They're horrible.
Yeah, the one side was replaced with what was there, the other side is just, you know, like a ace fence, you know? But the problem is that the railings that they do put in ultimately should go from corner to corner, north to south, because if you step off that curb or fall off that curb with a bicycle, it's about a two-foot drop.
You're absolutely right, I've lived that, I know what you're talking about now. Can we all, I made the motion to add.
That's all, thank you.
Your pass under the Nassau Boulevard, Nassau Boulevard roadway at the Maryland Avenue station, please, have you already included?
I'm just curious, since the long-term review of the work, Ralph, are you responsible for putting it back up?
On that particular issue, that's where I would go with it.
Yeah.
What I'll do is I'll document it, I'll ask the question, and if it's theirs, I'll have him do it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other additional comments on the general items?
Hi, Judy Gordon, Community Month Street. I have the same question on two items. So first, on the library, it's hard to follow with all the change orders and all that kind of thing. What is the anticipated total cost for those renovations with everything that we know so far?
So the total renovation so far, so.
No, you could change that.
There's a change order last, last week, thirteen thousand change, I don't have the exact number in my head, I'm sorry. And then we had all the fees, and with the twenty-two thousand on credit, this, so with the two trillion, that are on tonight's agenda, it becomes after about thirty-six hundred dollars because of credit. So the added thirty-six hundred is less, these thirteen, it's about sixteen, seventeen, just under seventeen thousand, all the change.
Right, what's the total cost estimated to be when we're finished?
Oh, the project was awarded at nine sixty-three, one something, it's in here.
So just under a million.
So it went up by sixteen thousand.
Okay, so we close to about a million.
Well, nine seventy-nine, yes.
And that does not include the air conditioning work, correct?
The air conditioning work is part of that, but it's coming from a different, it's coming from the HVAC budget capital block, right? The sixty thousand is part of that nine sixty-three.
So why did I hear like the air, what's the cost of the air conditioning work? I thought that was fairly substantial.
HVAC work is sixty-eight thousand dollars, it's part of the award that was given to the contractor, it's just been funded from a different budget.
Okay, so all that HVAC work is only sixty-eight thousand dollars?
Right, because the, there's already an HVAC system in the library, which has been replaced.
Right.
However, they're building a couple of rooms, for the children, and when they build those partitions, they're basically cutting off those rooms from the, what was once an open area. So to accommodate the atmosphere in there, we're putting, they're putting split units there. So those two environments, one in the back, in the southwest, southwest corner and northwest corner, they will have their own HVAC controls, which will not disturb the rest of the proper children's area of the library.
Okay, so I heard a wildly different number on the HVAC, so I'm going to.
Or the HVAC for the whole building.
Yeah, that was my question, the whole building.
Yeah, I don't have it in my head, but I think it's something worth a million dollars.
Yeah, okay, so that's more than.
Yeah, I wish we took six, we took sixty-eight after this, we may or may not need to supplement, I remember, because we have two HVAC projects going on.
Yeah.
There's one over here, too, is a substantial, well, one of them was shy, and we had, I think it was this one, I'm not sure about the library one.
Okay, thank you. And then my second related question is, what are, I don't know if we know this yet, the total anticipated cost for the, this renovation, I call it, of the firehouse over on the west side of town? So not the, you know, not the big renovation, I understand, but to repair, what is the anticipated cost for that?
I'm not sure.
You don't have it yet, so.
Then they're designing it, tonight's, tonight's is then to take the program, you know, that was the stuff the chiefs, and to put together a design and a spec package which should go out.
Like a cost estimator.
Yeah.
Sorry. But anyway, so that's, so once we get that back, then we'll know what those are going to be. And do we know what we spent so far on that, about?
How much you spent on it?
Repair so far to that part?
Does that mean you worked closely on that, I'm sure.
I mean, ballpark, I understand.
So you talked about the asbestos radiation.
Yeah, all that kind of thing.
I think it was, it was a budget, it was a budget of about one point, one million dollars, and I think we were, two-thirds of that, right?
Okay.
About two-thirds of that was spent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional comments for the audience, for general items? Anybody else?
Ryan O'Grady, 147 Hampton Road, just on item four, again, as the head of the subcommittee for finance for St. Paul's, it would be helpful if we had some kind of estimate of, and the cost estimator for being engaged or approved to be engaged, so we can come up with a game plan here. We have Tom Hall set up, it'd be nice to know what we can present, or might be able to present what we can't present to the residents. So, you know, as member of the committee, other members of the committee, it would be nice to know when that could happen. But as a resident, it would be nice to know if the experts, the engineers, the architects, contractors all say this is a next step needed, it'd be nice to know why some trustees feel it's not needed at this time. Thanks.
Steve Lodi, 189 Meadow, we got in the leaves that trustee O'Brien brought up on Garden, maybe con kelle could blow them onto the resident's side of the street, so you don't have piles of leaves at both curves, just put the leaves, you know, ten feet over, join the resident leaves. To answer Judy's question, on the October minutes, the library HVAC system was increased the budget from one point one million to one point seven seven.
Wait, so now two fifty?
One point seven.
She's got a text from Mrs. Wu, she was on the call, she said the library, oh, this is, the HVAC is one one, I'm not sure if this is the right answer, I don't, I don't have it in my, or I think this is, what she gave is different information, I don't have information from you.
I just read it from the minutes, not October minutes.
I don't have that from you.
Okay.
I trust this is the one, I assume, possibly ten there.
Right, this is quite a difference.
I'll have Ralph go back to.
Thank you.
Oh, here it is, she just texted, one point eight million dollars, library.
Hello, good evening, everyone, I'm Robert Stone, I'm also a member of the budget and finance committee, and I remember not that long ago, when we set up RFPs for companies to come in, stabilization of St. Paul's, that those that answered, we ended up having a meeting where they presented, represented some each of their companies that stood in front of the public, and told the public as to why they're going to do it, and how they're going to do it, and so on, so we were able to make some comparison of each of these companies. And now we're going forward with this estimated, and there's three of them, why not have representatives from all three of these companies come and stand here or whatever, and give their presentation so everyone can hear the differences between what they're going to do and the next one's going to do? Because I'm looking here, the one that is on schedule is sixty-nine thousand dollars, all the, the two others are over a hundred thousand dollars more than that one. So I want to know what is not being done, and what is being done, and the only ones that answer that are the companies themselves. Thank you.
Is that it, you want some answers? To answer that question, the RFP went out back in October, and we did get responses with that, we sent out the total of emails to eleven that were referred, and we only have three responses. It did go out on Contract Reporter, numerous companies did look at it, I got a few callbacks. I got a few callbacks that they were, it's a great project, but they didn't have the time to look at it. So the only three firms that answered the RFP are respectable firms. I went through the whole process with them as far as what was on the RFP to make them understand what we're looking for. And the lowest bidder was Westman Construction. They did the walkthrough with me, and they were full aware of what we were expecting them to do.
The two others are both a hundred thousand dollars more. And I don't understand what's the big difference. Either...
That's something that only they can answer?
Each one is going to be a budget estimate. Or, and the other ones are going to be more thorough, up-to-date estimates. I don't know. I would like to have a presentation like I had the stabilization. The three of you coming, the representatives, standing in front of this committee and answer questions.
And so we're all at a time, and we get price differences like that. The firms have different overhead costs. I mean, for the, for the Edgeman Firehouse, we had people over two hundred thousand dollars. These are engineering firms that have much more overhead support and they, God bless them, they always give us proposals, but we rarely award them because they're just adverbial. But they're doing the same work as the one that's the smaller firms that are lighter on their feet.
I would just like to know, I think the public would like what they would present. How they're going to conduct their study and how they're going to estimate the cost of what's going to be done. Because right now, what I'm seeing with, let me go there. What I'm seeing now on the reply from Westman was, is that they are just going to do a compilation of previous studies and come up with their estimate. The fact of the matter is, is they're not looking at or touching any environmental hazardous material in the building, which could be quite costly. So in essence, if they're going to do what they're going to do and not even put that in regard for their estimate, that's like having half the estimate. It's like having, you know, buying a car or whatever, and this is what the car costs. Or you want four tires on the car, well, it's going to be X amount more. This is something that really should be questioned and answered. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Steve Cora, Cambridge Avenue. Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you.
I'm a little puzzled why is such a focus on low-cost bidder? I think quality is more important than low cost. This is not a fungible type of contract. We're not buying oranges and apples by the crate. We are asking for professional services. And in that vein, and if my own looking at the three, and I'm no expert, it seems to me that the higher bidders are including a lot more services and a lot more evaluation. Whether or not it's worth that additional cost is certainly, it's up to the board. It's certainly not up to me. But I hope that those factors are all considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I just also comment that we always strive for low cost, but we go for the lowest responsible bidder. And if the references check out and the work that we asked for is met in the proposal and we're even responsible, we go for the lowest bidder. But we have also made choices for this board. We have to bring back the second lowest or the third lowest because we want the right job done for the dollar we're paying. It is taxpayer money. So that's why we're proud of our fees, and they come in, we review them before we make recommendations. So I appreciate the comments, but I want you to respect the professionalism. We do what we do, just before we read further word in public.
Thank you.
Frank Gunner, one forty-one Hampton Road. Good evening. Last evening, the programmatic and use committee of the mayor's committee on St. Paul's held its fifth town hall. There was a good crowd there, and we reviewed in summary fashion the prior four town halls, in particular demolition, facade and adaptive reuse. This, in many ways, concludes most of our listening period for programmatic use. Sometime after, in December, we begin the second half of our committee's work, which is to look at cost analysis, more particularly on operating maintenance costs for a range of different options that we have reviewed. That will take some time. I do want to point out that not only were the trustees there, which we appreciate, but prior to the meeting, we had several personal meetings with various trustees who had very probing questions, and we think we made considerable progress in bridging a lot of communication gap. We are able to continue to do that. I'd only point out that as we ended the meeting, there were a substantial number of residents who raised the question of cost and cost estimation was the next phase. I know that's a topic for this evening. I believe it would be a good consideration. We look forward to it because we work hand in glove with our work on operating maintenance costs. Finally, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
Good evening, folks. All right, eight Fetter and three oh one Franklin. I would suggest that this vote will not be the last time that we consider, and I'm optimistic that the vote will pass today. But it's not inconceivable that we'll need two or three additional cost estimates as we pare down exactly what's going to be done. So as opposed to the two gentlemen who led off the comments here, we have to have trust in our, in our village leaders and in the staff and in their process. So I would suggest that I certainly support that, but would urge the board to pass the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had one question for some of the folks who spoke. Were you comfortable with Westman's RFP? I think it was distributed to the committee as well. Frank, are you here? Did you hear my question? On the Westerman proposal, there's been comments. Were you comfortable, was your committee comfortable with the RFP submitted by Westerman? Because you folks are evaluating it.
Trustee O'Brien, we did take a look at the proposal. We did take a look at both proposals, both the August proposal that was brought under emergency session, and the fairly updated and approved RFP that's up. We were more than satisfied with that at that time. I think if we had any comments, they were included after the first RFP. And you can see the difference between the two, which we tested our comments. So we were more than comfortable with the result. We were remembering the trustees suggesting we worked with. We would expect it would be a very collaborative process, and all of our members are ready on our committee to assist and accelerate that process and minimize amount of professional time that Westman has to apply to the analysis that they've been asking.
Okay, thanks for your...
I think it's worth commenting, Deputy Mayor, also, that that second RFP sprung from the St. Paul's committee meeting that was invited to, that was directed.
They did.
All the trustees were there, I believe, except the trustee that was in the middle of that night. But that was directed to modify the RFP so that the language is more specific and included facadeism, and that's what was going on, where you're going to write all edits.
So, thank you very much.
Hi, Will Elise, Tony Pelters. I'm curious...
Will, before you start, thank you so much for all your work. Will has been putting all these architectural drawings together, listening to all the input. And I think he deserves a round of applause.
Thank you, that's very good. I was going to say, I'm folding my arms up because I'm angry. It's not covering a...
Oh, shit, I've never seen you angry.
I have a stain that I just saw. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I am understanding correctly. There is a seventy-day period of review. And the reason that is critical, I think in response to some concern to you for us, that is our opportunity to review, or whoever does this, the legislature, whoever, review the estimates for completeness, accuracy. And it's very critical because there's a lot of alternatives and options that are being under consideration. So I think those seventy days are a very important period. And as long as Westerman, or whoever is selected, is screened carefully at that time, it should be an acceptable estimate. I want to reiterate, for those who weren't there yesterday, what I stated in a process such as this. It would be normal whether you do demolition or construction. It would be normal to do, I would say, two to three cost estimates. You wouldn't do it after programming. You would do it now, after systematic design. And then you would do it after design development. And then it would go out to bid, and there'll be a value engineering session at that point.
So you're suggesting this is the first, and I have two or three more?
I would say two more, possible three, but I think two. The bid is not a cost estimation, it's the actual price. However, when the actual price comes in, if it exceeds the budget that was accepted with the design development by the second cost estimate, at that point, there's a value engineering stuff that's going to...
I have a, I have a question in the back of my mind that I wanted to ask. What's the limit? What's the highest number that the village will go before they say it's too much?
I don't think, if I could answer my contention on that, I think it all is affiliated with what the village ultimately will want to put in. If there's a poll, for example, it's going to be on it.
You're saying it varies on the price?
No, well, yeah, I mean, they want, yeah.
It was a blank check.
And, well, it's not a blank check, no. Now, there'll be a budget, and they'll have to work to the budget.
Yeah, but the budget's going to be wherever they want to do it.
One, one, one quick thing, I think, which is important. Well, I know your background, but just share with the people if they don't know your background, because I think it's pretty phenomenal.
No, I'm a registered architect with forty years' experience, but...
But I know who you are.
Well, he is my...
But I mean, you've done international work.
I've done international work, and I've worked for Golden Sachs for twenty years. But the main crux that I just wanted to say is that the process is appropriate for a project that was banking to, it's more than appropriate. And I don't see any reason why we can't proceed. I'm just, thank you.
In other words, we hired this one for sixty-nine thousand.
Could we end the crosstalk here? I think it's in the...
I agree, I agree.
I thought it was...
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, trustees, the committee that convened in the last time of the fifth town hall has made a promise. We're going to reiterate the promise now. All the dreams that residents brought to us, we wanted every voice to be heard. That's why we had so many town halls, why we kept our Tuesday night meetings open to the public, why we reached out to over twenty-five assembly groups. We will continue to do so. These are certain dreams. All of us have been in projects in which we had dreams. That doesn't mean we can afford them. A major promise of our committee is that whatever we do must be affordable. If it's not affordable, it is not acceptable. The cost estimator is part of that process. I defer to the experts, such as Will Elise and others, who tell me that over the course of any project, there must be multiple cost estimates. I think there are down here options. That is something we would consider. But our committee is hell-bent on making sure every voice is heard and that every solution that we propose will be affordable. This is no blank check. Thank you, sir.
I think I have one final word. Maybe it's not the final word, but my final...
We'll give you three chances tonight, is that...
This is the second, I'm going to keep that one. I think the solution to this is after the cost estimation, at a certain point, there should be either a poll or a survey. That is going to be fashioned by presumably the board, the mayor, possibly the committee. And that will be able to winnow down some of the uses that may be piling this far. We're not going to have, we're not going to have a NASCAR track, and we're not going to have a ski lift. But we could have other things that are quite expensive. So hopefully, we can, through a survey or through a poll, winnow out some of these things, some of the villagers may want. Well, that's expensive, keep that in there for the future consideration when fashion, the ultimate two questions. But I think the solution is going to be, or it's part of the solution, is a poll or a survey. Thank you.
Steve, Steve, let me explain. I think what we'll have is each concept will have a cost estimate, right? So when that concept is proposed to the residents, they will know how much it probably will cost, and then have a better way to judge, and then we can have a poll with more information. So again, the role of the committee is to get information and educate the residents as much as possible. I think they've done a very good job. And I like your question, I think it's appropriate. And I think it's going to be very simple, once we have the estimate, to understand what the adaptive reuse will cost, what demolition is going to cost, and what facade is going to cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I think Ryan Eno, that who's setting up the finance committee, that that would be a good idea, speaking also. I'm in favor of it.
Any other comments, Mr. Williams?
Mr. Samuel, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Mr. Samuel, yes.
I have a very basic question. How can the estimate get done when there's so narrowing of the long list of uses coming from the committee? Isn't there lots of waste of time analyzing things that are in the dark? We just don't have proposals that are final, everything is set in. How can the estimate be a job on this so final list of what we want to do? That's my question.
Is there anyone answering, someone answering?
You can answer.
George, can you hear me?
Yes.
George, this is a process. It's not finite yet because we're still, the project is still evolving. It's evolving in all three concepts, right? As we, as the committee goes through with the, with the information from the cost estimator, but they will work, work accurately to find what you're going to get for the money, right? So again, you have to give the committee a chance to go through the process with the estimator. And I believe after the seventy-day period, we'll have a better result.
Is it possible we'll have another seventy days of jobs and...
George, the agreement with the estimator is, is allowing sixty to seventy days, calendar days, to do the estimates. That's in the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on Zoom? Yeah?
I have a question regarding the, at the top of the meeting, with the, with the weed program and the thing of the leaves. What, the good stuff, what happens with that mulch that we need, and the composting that stuff? Is it given out to, you know, rednecks and soil? What, what do we do with that?
The mulch that we, that we had, it's available for pickup by the residents for free. I don't think we've ever sold any, any, I think in years gone by. It was the more popular item. But it has basically dried up as a, so it's, what we, first of all, the, the the amount of land it takes up, it's monitored by the DEC on a weekly, weekly basis. But we have to put a man in there churning it constantly, which is, which is not a good use of the manpower. And then it just sits there and takes up room. And then we have to haul it away so we can make room for the next year's leaves. So what we've done is, a decision was made a couple of years back to clear as much as out as we could and just keep up repairing your leaves, which is a problem right now. So after this year, since the trees are pretty consistent each year, we will have a good idea of what it would cost annually on an operating basis.
Yeah, I know, Charlie, many people who live in George City have, or a majority of the people here do. And it's one thing, with the collection of weeds that pile up from a home, it does create a safety hazard. It's now the road when there's inclement weather, important flooding. Now, you know, we just have landscapers thinking of like a direction here, and that has a weed collection. Now, you know, we just have landscapers thinking of like a direction here and then have a leaf collection.
There's a question I can answer, sir. I would love not to pick up leaves. I would love very much for the, the village to pass a law that the residents must give rid of their own leaves at no expense. And we'd save not only overtime associated with all the capital equipment and the mechanics working in that equipment and getting rid of the mulch at the end. So I'd love your idea, I think you should send a letter to the board.
I would have to do something else, I don't know, I'm still hesitant about it, no matter what. You know, it's just, I just, not from, it's just a case of issue, I, I, it does, people walking the trees, the mess, kind of, they're driving, like, they're like, and this pile of leaves, it's just a case of issue, now I know, it's not, but, if I want a letter, I want a letter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to follow up Mr. O'Brien's comments on Zoom. A safety point that we should bring up is no resident should park their car over a pile of leaves. We know they're inconvenient, we know they, you know, stack up in front of your home, but it actually is a very big fire safety hazard. We have several car fires a year that start because someone will park over a pile of leaves and that heat just causes combustion and it actually ends up totaling the car. So please do not park on top of a pile of leaves. Wait till they're removed and then park where you can on your block. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, I think that's a very valuable comment.
Any other comments on Zoom?
No.
Good, I'm going to go forward. Let us continue with tonight's regular board trustee debate. To improve the minutes of previous board trustees' meeting, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 47, 2022? So, all of them, alright. Let's move to the formal agenda. Reappointment of village councils for tax, sorority, and national union acorn matters. Or authorization request of reappointing colon and diaphragm to ROP, 100% Roosevelt Boulevard, Garden City, New York, in connection with tax, sorority, and national union acorn matters for the time period July 18, 2022, April 3, 2023. The rates are filed with the village clerk. Their motion to approve the reappointment of colon and diaphragm at the, of RIT, of CERT, tax, sorority, and national union acorn matters. There's, I have a question. Trustee Torino, I imagine you did answer this question that I sent by email. This just continues the division that you and I have made. Thank you. So I make that motion. Over there? I have motion to this. It's the consent calendar. We have to deal with the four items that were removed, can I do this question?
Well, first you make the motion with those, to approve of the doubt those items, four, five, six, and 13, and seven.
No. Four, six? Six is gone. So it's four, five, seven, 13. Make the motion. I second the motion to approve the consent calendar about four, five, seven, and 13, which will be under discussion, and six, it was removed.
I'll second.
Four, five. Well, by one, let's go to the floor first, right? Do we give them in reverse numerical order?
Yeah, that'll be...
Yes, clear reverse, is that okay?
There are two...
13.
13. I look to amend the resolution, the lower deposit in 1960, 1932, in an amount of $36,005, $36,000, to properly reflect the work that is paid in form by the contract.
I second that motion. Next one?
We move now to number seven. It was amended, we now to, move to the next one.
You just asked?
Yes. Let's go to the rest of the board.
Seven is for discussion?
Right.
They're adding, they're adding, Carol, Red.
No, no. No, no, seven is an off-peak, off-peak parking, that's it.
I'll start this and this is who can jump in if, as necessary. So right now, I understand that this is probably in response to the, the woman who talked about seniors and going to the village of the city for doctors and museums and...
That woman is it?
Lynn Krueg.
Lynn Krueg.
Yes, yes, so...
Yes, that's why, that's why I added this to our agenda, to respond to that.
So we were, we were talking about there, we, we support her request, but we thought there might be, we want to discuss with the board that there might be another way to achieve this by, by, because the request has, is right now, it required a process change for the finance department, it required an upgrade to our Keystone General Ed system where the commits are issued from. And it also, I believe, require a new enforcement issued for the commissioner, I'll let him speak to that. We thought maybe the board might want to consider something simpler, like just charging seniors half the rate and not having any off-peak at all, just let them, you know, charge, we could sign, you know, it's a very easy solution.
Yeah, so what you're suggesting, you vary the ways, it's just if you're a senior, you show you're a senior, you get a half rate.
You get a half rate of $50, they're going to make it, but it's just...
But it was not just for seniors, it was for open, it was open to anyone.
Can you talk to my...
Yes, sir.
How do you view the discussion?
I'm Lynn Krueg, to write the court. When I made the proposal, because I'm a senior, I wasn't thinking, for most people, who might be interested in doing what I want to do, I want to go into the city. And we talked about opening up, opening it up to anyone. Nassau Boulevard is deserted. You can go up there during the day, there's plenty of parking. I'm not so sure about Maryland because I really don't go up that way. Garden City might have openings, but I think it would be a very good enhancement. I'm not wearing a mask tonight, I can't wait to start going back and doing things. And in order to do it, I need to take the train because I'm certainly not driving into Manhattan. And I think it's a really good thing for people in the village. If you want to go to a play matinee, you want to go into the city on weekends, parking doesn't allow it. You can't park there. That's what the sign says. I don't want to get to take it. I follow the rules, but I'm really hopeful that it wouldn't be so much of a burden to the village to institute this.
What is the cost now?
I believe it's $150.
$150 for holding a...
Yes.
What exactly is the issue with, I think it happens, just if we could just do a different color, that would be the off-peak. So I guess my question would be, would the cost not cover the, the cost of ordering these extra passes, you know, stickers in a different color? And how could enforcement just know the time and during what hours, you know, if they're there during, at 9:00 AM, that other colored, you know, the off-peak passes, maybe?
We know the cost of a sticker, but...
Oh, there's one for the commissioner and him, Mr. Spazey, I'm trying to understand the challenges the village of doing it the way it was proposed. Okay, we have, Ms. Wu was on the, maybe if she could text to you, we're having difficulty with your audio, so then...
Can't quite hear you, Irene, now.
No, I heard you then, try again.
Try again.
Okay, so I'll speak in terms of the finance department. Our current part of the current system does not allow for any additional modification to what we currently have. So we are looking to do our financial system development in terms of what the vision is that we propose and they would provide us with a fault system, so we can, we can possibly do that. And that would be a compromise, implement those changes. So if we want to implement in our, our, our path, that would require a system modification. Because in order to be, have a part to do with path, that would require modification. So either way, that suppose will require a system modification and a cost associated with that, and, and, and kind of. So I'm not sure that we, you know, how long that would require the, the development to implement those changes. Yes, absolutely, and, and I'm looking at, at the board's path, as one of the decisions, and that is that there would be times to implement these changes when we require.
And you mentioned, even the easy solutions, they have price for seniors until we get this next program.
Even, I think even for seniors requires modifications, is what I'm hearing. Is that what I heard, I mean?
Yeah, that's correct.
As from the enforcement standpoint, the, well, of course, one could always be easier. The issue is, it could get a little confusing because if, one, if you give it to a half rate or something, somebody needs to go to a doctor or a hospital to get a, you know, some type of medical service, they can go at eight o'clock if they need to. And also, if somebody who has a permit comes in at 10:05 and, and there's a car there, then they, they feel like they're being, you know, taking a spot away from them. So I think that it would be easier if it's, it works. We try to have price with the seniors or whatever price end of date. It's easier to enforce, it allows people the option to go to the city earlier and, and, and get medical care because I believe some people really need the medical care, maybe one or maybe once or twice a week, and that's important.
I agree, I agree. I think the half-price idea about, is that some, I really make less than one.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, Irene, I don't know, I'm running into detail, but it sounds like the way your system works is it's a, without getting into too many details, but there's a pass, there's an amount of $150, it doesn't care who you are, it just takes $150 of the pass, is that it?
Yeah, the system, the system is now under the ownership of Keystone General Ed system, but the system as being used was actually written as proprietary software piece for us many years ago. The person who wrote it sold it to Keystone, so it's not part of their homegrown system. So the modifications require a little research and important time. That's why Mrs. Wu wants to sit there, expectations, no matter what you do tonight, there's going to be a, a gap between the vote and the actual implementation of it.
Because where does this system feed to? So if it says $150, it goes through a billing system, so it doesn't send any, send any more back to you?
Mrs. Wu, did you hear the question?
Because my simple question is this, right? Yes, we bill a senior $150, we choose it from the system $150, but we actually take $50 from them, right? So yes, there'll be a gap and there'll be a certain number of people who'll have to track separately on it until the system's actually implemented, but this shouldn't be a major issue.
Yeah, no, I'd say so, that's what I'm saying.
How long would it take then, that system?
I don't think I have the answer to that, they have to talk to the folks at Keystone. We can, we can, if, if the board wants to approve, half rate, we'll come back with estimates for you and all the work around this, trust me, Washington, if we can manually track, if the system, if we have 10 people, seniors, and the system tracks $1,500, we know it's $97.50, we can track that through a spreadsheet on the sun.
Is Lu going to bring all her friends in, news, we're going to have fun.
I have the money, go back, son.
No, I mean, you have...
No, but you, you, don't you charge people $500 who are non-residents for a parking sticker? How are you handling that? That's kind of a one-off.
Yeah, well, that's included in our, in our current system.
It's already programmed, so there's, so...
So it's programmed to handle $500.
This is one of their options.
That hard to program, you know, a one-off for seniors.
There was $50 or was it $75? Fifty. Seventy-five became the, when they were, they were talking about half-price for seniors, but 50 is how it was written and proposed.
Yeah, it could be whatever the board chooses, but it's not a big revenue stream that we can earn, this is $25 or something.
But it helps the seniors, so I'm in favor of 50.
What's the senior age, do we, do we have to say what senior is?
I mean, it depends, you could be 29 and be unarmed. You could be 62 and, you know, be eligible to retire, 65, you can't carry a...
It starts as low as 55, and she's...
Forever of 62.
Doesn't wish to...
It's 55.
65.
65.
I thought that.
65, $50, you're right there.
That's good.
65, very much.
I think it's not being completely...
Mrs. O'Brien.
That makes sense, one?
Well, I thought when we talked about that, we didn't want to just include seniors, it kind of morphed into, you know, anyone who really wanted to get an off-peak, you can park a sticker.
That's the issue, the issue is not the age, the issue is utilization of people. So it has to be an off-peak.
Yes.
Right, that's, yeah, it was never about seniors.
I mean, it was seniors initially, and then I got educated because people started saying, well, what about now? And I said, well, it's up to the board. But I think, you know, it's a revenue producer for the village.
So my question, if this is an off-peak issue, then how do you deal with that in terms of enforcement?
Enforcement in the morning is always the toughest because of the dual traffic, but whatever we give them, we'll, we'll deal with it. But it's just a concern, I, because there are a lot of people who utilize that lot, assume the other lot that are more packed, and they come in later. So there's, you know, that's the only, I was thinking, there might be a time when a person who pays on $50 can't get a spot and, you know, and because he does, he or she starts earlier. But we, we did, we'll, we'll deal with whatever, you know, is dealt with. It's just sometimes you got to be patient in the morning, and sometimes they can get to the last two credits.
And does this have to be collated with the Royal Road or something? Because she says she's going into the city, she's in the Royal Road.
Well, one, whoever, whoever, probably not.
Yeah, I mean, I think the thought was 10 o'clock, right?
Yeah, 10 o'clock, people take it, Royal Road, it's because of 10 o'clock.
Yeah. Do you think that rising, New York City terminal after 10:00 is considered off-peak?
I have a question, what about the, what about the exit time? So are you saying it's going over an entry time or an exit time or what?
I think the request was just for 11:00 to 5:00, because that's what most people come in in the morning, but, you know, that is a concern, but some people come later.
Well, I thought that people, I thought that you were going to restrict it from 5:00 AM to 10:00.
Yes.
Right, that's the...
The research and security parking time.
And that makes the most sense because it's in the morning. I mean, there are people, obviously, that work later in the city, but the majority, I would think, would be going in in the morning. So 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM would be a good time. 10:00 AM is when the off-peak trains start. So that's what I think we should do, and it should be an off-peak sticker.
Thank you very much.
So it comes down to the changes that will have to be given by the board in time each year.
Last point is to, like, read and see.
Also, your mayor wanted to say they're not doing it at Maryland and maybe touch a lot of press because they're very limited spies. Maryland, this came back already, so that might be two areas that need to be made, you know, I could say.
We need to hear it. All right, so it's just at the Nassau Boulevard and Stewart Manor, Garden City also. Okay, Nassau Boulevard, Garden City, and Stewart Manor stations. That's where it can be used, the off-peak. No way, Maryland, so that's, it would be those three. Okay, next.
Are you wrong to make a...
We didn't finish on this one yet. Are we going to vote on this one as amended? And the amendments appear to be only that the, to add off-peak schedules at the Nassau Boulevard, Garden City, and Stewart Manor railroad stations. That's the only change in the wording, right?
True, because it's contingent upon what the software may come back with, the series can be...
But what you wind up doing is voting on the resolution, subject to implementation by the treasurer and the implementation by the village parks office. So we're giving them the authority to move forward. It is a ministerial act of getting it done, which, when they do it, they do it.
We may, we, once we get the, size it up, we may come back and ask the board for $3,000, whatever it takes. I don't know what's in the court, but...
All right, so that's number seven with those two amendments.
I'll make the motion.
Number seven, correct, right.
Subject to implementation.
And then the village parks office, the treasurer.
Any second.
And third, can I suggest something? Can I suggest something?
Um, the fee, the fifty dollar fee, that should be in separate part from the resolution. You probably have a resolution establishing an off-peak, uh, parking pass. The fee should be separately, uh, put into the fee schedule so that you have, you don't have to amend this resolution every time you want to change the fee. You have a general, uh, ability to amend fee schedules from time to time. So I wouldn't include the fee schedule in the resolution. I, I think you want to keep that separate from the resolution to establish an off-peak parking pass.
So, as we stated?
Alright, so, uh, we do that, I'll make a motion, um, to establish an off-peak parking pass for, um, their own country like.
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, for, um, the symbol, the symbol works, Stewart Manor and Garden City, five AM to ten AM weekdays, subject to implementation. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, just, uh, five AM, actually, we don't have to say week, we had weekdays in this language.
Yeah, I don't think we have to worry about that.
Okay, so just five, five AM to ten AM, um, subject to implementation by the village staff.
And then to amend the fee schedule.
I was gonna do it separately, someone a second, that?
I'll say it.
I'll give her. I'll make a motion then to amend the fee schedule to reflect fifty dollars as the fee for the off-peak, um, parking pass.
And you will update with the, um, five dollars for the decals?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, okay.
So that's, that's number seven, now number five.
Actually, I could vote on that, though, I'll make a motion to authorize then the fee schedule in order to add the fee of five dollars for landscapers who request replacement decals for the vehicles.
Are moving on to five, right, number five. This is the restriction in the parking fields that abut residences to not have any parking during the hours of three AM, six AM, and.
If I may, that's a traffic commission responsibility, so you may want to write a amendment to the traffic commission that can look into this. Under section forty-six hundred of the bill, the regulation of, um, of those, those types of, uh, regulations are left to the traffic license.
We'll have, we'll have discussion anyway, because we want to hear, it was, I think, Commissioner, you were concerned about the people who did cleaning between those hours and would be using the parking lots, is that one concern?
Yes, um, the concern is, uh, there, there are workers who come in early, um, and, and some are late, maybe cleaning the bars and the restaurants. Uh, we, uh, we did a quick study today, just for instance, at three-ten, uh, in the morning, um, public affiliated at one, nine W at two, at ten at one, but at five-fifty, it was already pretty robust at nine W, uh, there's a lot of things going on there. Uh, so, uh, either, uh, we change the, maybe possibly change the hours, or something like, um, we'll talk to enforcement, we can figure it out, uh, a two-hour park between three and six, something like that may also be an idea. You know, because there are some people who come in, if they come in early, uh, to go to the cycle law or, or, or the bank guy, if they come in at, um, four-thirty-five, they're covered. They don't have to worry about two-hour parking or, or not allowed, being allowed to park there. And then, um, if somebody's cleaning, I don't think they'll be cleaning for, you know, if they're cleaning at two o'clock or four o'clock, they probably won't be cleaning, I don't know. So I think that might be just something to think of, uh, because there are people who do come in early, always short the hours.
And one other thought I had was, could we do this just for a segment of the, these three parking lots? Because we're not concerned with the entire parking lot anyway. We're only concerned with that segment that abuts residences. So, you know, like parking lots, like behind the Garden City, not the center, they have segmented rules.
We used to have that parking for eleven, with Lord Taylor. No parking, uh, between, I believe, seven and nine in the morning, uh, because people were using our spots, so they had, uh, so there was actually a section that was, uh, per the traffic commission and signed up. Uh, and the back of Paul Lord Taylor, but it remembers that those days. So, uh, that can be done, you can take any row and, you just make sure of proper signage. So once it's approved, uh, it goes to DPW, and they, and they determine how many signs have to be placed. We just have to direct them to exactly where to go.
So I'll reformulate this proposal for the next traffic commission meeting, and we can take a look at it there. Was there anything else, uh, Mr. Squawson, that you wanted to add to this discussion before I reformulate this for the traffic commissions?
No, I appreciate yours and the board's attention, it was just to make sure that it got aired and discussed as it was.
Okay, thank you, alright, so that's not being, that's being taken off the calendar and not considered, uh, anymore, no motion will be made on it, that's number five.
With regard to number five, you know, the issue here is you can change by your standing, just the fact that it is restricted parking where signs are so indicated. So if you want to have, I'm sorry about that, um, it's requested to restrict the parking in parking fields wherever at where so indicated parking is restricted.
Right, yeah, thank you. So we'll take that up at the next traffic commission meeting after the members have a chance to go back to these parking lots and take a look at what areas would be affected and would be needed to be so restricted. So that ends, so the only one left is four, right? Number four.
I just, I have a comment on this before. As far as the cost estimator, I want to join, and everyone's been thanking the committee for all the work they've done, and I've enjoyed having the opportunity to learn more about your work and meet with you, and, um, it's appreciated, and I agree that, and I sense from the community that there is a desire to get numbers, and I think people are, I've noticed as you came up with the different presentations, I feel like there's more and more interest from the community, and people are starting to feel like maybe we are going to be able to, uh, make a decision on St. Paul's finally. Um, and I do agree with your thoughts, um, you know, and the community sentiment of getting sub-numbers. And so I'm just suggesting a little rewording, I think it's important that the trustees be part of this, as we have been more recently, um, and that the community's all kept on board, uh, with what's going on, so.
That's another change there. I've joined your request, and with regard to the protocol by which the village goes forward, once a cost estimator is retained, he has the obligation to come back to the village and interact with the village. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the cost, uh, cost estimator comes back to the building department and the engineers, who are then assisted by members of the St. Paul's committee, and specifically that any member of the board trustees can attend any meeting, but because of the open meeting law, cannot actually comment. That any document that is created with regard to the cost estimator be shared as soon as prepared with all of the members of the board trustees, that would be my recommendation as to how we go forward.
I agree with that, in fact, Mary, I discussed that, I think that's great. Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Just a comment on that, in the RFP, there is a scheduled presentation to the board, prior to us agreeing to anything, just, just wanted to know that.
My, my concern is that we make sure that we work, uh, in an efficient manner with the cost estimator weekly or bi-monthly basis until we get full information, because it's, it's tremendous amount of information that he or she will absorb during the process, and the large interaction will be committed.
Lots of doing seventy days.
It is, it's quite a bit of work in seventy days. Will the cost estimator meet periodically with the St. Paul's committee? Okay.
Yeah, weekly or bi-monthly.
Okay, which is great, because the committee has been very accommodating and, and, and I try to make, uh, I think I've made every meeting since they have been, uh, coming forward, except I had the audacity to go to Mexico one week, but outside of that, it was a good trip, I didn't do any, didn't do any fishing, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, but it was a great trip. But it's very informative, so, you know, I will continue to go, and then hopefully the cost estimator will be there and, or get some information. With regard to number four, I would suggest that the, uh, that resolution be amended to provide that Westerman firm is being retained by the village of Garden City and the board of trustees, and not by the mayor individually or the mayor's committee. All work is to be reported to the board of trustees, and all meetings during this process are to be scheduled with the board of trustees. Before any work is begun by the estimator, the board of trustees will hold a work session that will be publicly noticed to discuss the details of which possible options should be estimated, and to decide how the communication between the board of trustees and the Westerman firm will be coordinated. That's my suggested amendment, and we look forward to continuing working with all the volunteers on the mayor's committee, who have been working so hard on this important project.
I have one comment I can do, there's a lot to absorb, but the, uh, the one comment is, I wouldn't want the meeting set up by us. I don't want to slow any progress, I think we should be alerted to every meeting so that we can attend if, uh, if we, if we would like to. But, uh, it's not our responsibility to set the meetings up, uh, we want the committee to work directly with, uh, Westerman, that's my opinion.
I think it's important at this point that we're in, involved in the process, and I'm not looking to delay. I don't say that we can't, you know, it has to be everyone at every meeting, but I do think we need to talk, and I think a public, hearing is a good idea for us to talk about what our expectations as the board are going forward from the cost estimator, and to have that line of communication, um, between the board, and I'm not looking to delay at all.
No, I understand, I think, I think what I'm saying is that, uh, let them set the meetings, and we should get, uh, be apprised of every meeting so that we can attend, and any communication or any incident matter that may be sent us so that we're on top of everything.
I want to add something.
That's, that's, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think we also have to make sure the meetings are set when we're available.
Right, true, but I think also you have to understand that the rest of the volunteers, especially most of them, are experts, professionals, in this field, engineers, architects, finance people. They're the ones who have to set these meetings, they're the ones who have to move forward with the, with the cost estimator, and then they can set up a schedule, you can, everyone can attend these meetings. As Bruce Ringo said, you can't have a quorum, right, you can kind of listen, and then you can provide honest feedback in useful ways to make sure that the committee is getting information. So that's the way I think it should be done, again, you can't negate the tremendous efforts these people have done and the professionalism that we have on, on this committee. It's really something special for the village, and I think that's the way it should be done.
I mean, no one's forgetting their commitment and the time we've put in, absolutely appreciated, and we look forward to continuing to working with them, but I think it's important at this juncture as we're spending this money and, um, moving forward in directions, and during the next, during this time period, decisions will be made as we're, I, I.
We're all in it, we want to vote, it's just a question of what the communication is. And I think we're just kind of scrambling, I believe, and, and.
The difficulty that I heard with the suggestion that was just made is who's driving the actual meetings themselves, and at whose schedule? I don't think that publicly noticing every meeting that is going to be held will promote the process. I certainly agree that every board member should have the opportunity to be available at the meeting, but my commentary is that you have the board schedule, and those members who are in fact the experts that will be doing the actual interfacing with the cost estimate is their schedules that should be controlled. Some of us work, some of us can make it, some of us can't, but it's how this gets moving forward as quickly as possible without violating either the open meeting law or in any way obstructing the dissemination of information. So any reports, as soon as they're ready, should be distributed. So I would advocate for the building superintendent to be the one who is interfacing with the cost estimator, and that he would then be able to coordinate with those members of the St. Paul's committee that would be designated to assist in this evaluation process.
I think it's important, just as we start off here, um, as trustee Kelly mentioned, that we start off with a, um, a work session amongst board of trustees, and I have heard, um, questions, and even tonight as to, well, what are we getting estimates on? I also, um, have just in the last week learned of, you know, prior, uh, plans that were developed that, um, by another engineering firm, and I think this is something that should all be spoken about publicly, and I, I'm not, I wasn't really gonna get into that, but that, um, the way I learned of this report really, um, makes me feel very strongly that the next step needs to be a public hearing to discuss what plans we're going forward with. And I'll, I'll leave it at that, if, if people agree, otherwise I'll elaborate further.
Are there members of the committee that want to make a comment about this, how you want to function? Is there any other committee?
A work session, a public, a public hearing could be a work session, right? It would be publicly noticed a work session, so to clarify here, it would be a work session. It would give us, um, who are ultimately responsible for these decisions, an opportunity to speak publicly. There are some materials we just received in the last week that I think warrant discussion, and I would hope, you know, I would love to have some of our, um, resident experts there to field questions. I'm not looking to cut people out, but I think it's important that we speak about the direction as we're engaging Westerman.
And I think if there's a report that came out, Mary, that maybe they didn't see the committee that's forwarded to them so they can evaluate and see what, uh, because we're still, we're the plans together, so that way they can look at and see what's feasible.
Right, I don't know, I, I haven't had, I know some on the committee hadn't seen it, I don't know.
Which report are you referring? I have no idea what you're talking about.
You do, because I sent an email that Irwin.
That's a two thousand twelve.
The two thousand twelve report.
Yes, the two thousand twelve report.
Ten-year-old report.
It's ten years ago where very, rather detailed analysis was done.
I remember that committee, I remember that report.
Okay, well, I wish you had.
That, that report is a diagram, that is, that is not what this committee has done. This committee has gone to a higher level than that report, so again, mixing apples and oranges here.
We can think about that.
That's a ten-year-old report, and it's like, that's like having surgery and getting an extra that's ten years old.
I would have to disagree with you having a report.
I'd rather, I know about the.
I don't know why you would say the building, you know, the building is the same building it was ten years ago. There may have been some deterioration, the input, I think, we've heard, that we're hearing now, some of it was actually taken from what we heard ten years ago, much of it is the same as what we were hearing ten years ago.
It's very dramatic, they, they've gone to a higher level.
No, I, I think, and I, I think it comes with great, and no one's, obviously they have. I think what Mary's suggesting is, while we're still looking at uses, if there's something that comes out of the report that could be feasible, um, you know, maybe we'll can see if we can put together a diagram on it. If there's nothing, then that's fine too, but at least it's looked at. I think what Mary's saying is maybe the, you folks have had a chance to look at it, I'm not sure.
I haven't seen that report, maybe it's worth looking at, but I haven't seen it.
But it's to do no harm.
What I do want to state right now is that, again, we have a seventy-day window. So if we exceed that, they're more than capable of asking for additional fees, so.
I don't think she's.
No, I know, we have to bear.
I look and slow that up, she just went, babe.
I agree.
I want to talk now.
We have to bear in mind the schedule. The only other comment I wanted to do, which I think should, might be helpful, if we were to develop a list of exactly what pricing we're doing based on the uses we currently have, and based on, you know, all three options that have been presented, I think that, that's probably an extension of the project. Because I don't believe you've seen that, you know, it should be put together, we need to celebrate transparency here, it's a village project, and, uh, I'm all for this, but we have to do it in a way that's. and, uh, I'm all for this, but we have to do it in a way that's timely.
I, I think this discussion all has to happen before the seventy day clock starts ticking.
Frank, I've done on one forty-one Hanson wrote, uh, as to the two thousand twelve report, uh, I have seen it. I saw it in two thousand twelve. The issues that are arrayed, arose in that report, it's a six-page report, the comments of which really came down to a disagreement on unit costs between that architect and engineer and the engineers who posed it between. Concepts that they used, which was preserving the I and keeping the chapel, was something we did look at. If you may recall, in our meetings and in our private meetings, we described several options. We used letters to describe them. But whether they were the I, the C, the E, the L, they included the one that is in this case a T because if you recall, what we said was if you use a C type of construction, removing those parts of the wings, you then had the option to continue to develop what would be a, uh, a use similar to reuse and they should have been adaptive reuse. So that was included in that. If that was not clear, that's our mistake and we apologize for that. But the issue in that report, which although it may be a new issue for some on the board, is not new to our committee. We reviewed C, L, I and all of those in some detail. We did not think that that alternative was actually often actually very smart because you had to remove all of the wings when in fact if you remove part of them, you could have the same beneficial effect. So on a cost basis, we avoided that. As to the committee working with the board, we look forward to that. If there is a kickoff meeting that becomes a work session, we look forward to that. It would suggest however that we'd be constrained, which is, I think that I understand trustee Kelly's proposal, to work on board protocol and board, uh, notices and board requirements. I think will significantly restrict the ability of our committee to work with the, uh, cost estimator. Our goal, which came actually from trustee Kelly, is to have a base case for each of the three options. That base case for demolition, for stasis and for adaptive reuse. And then to outline the various additions that could be, uh, subject to other community review and if necessary, a, uh, survey associated with that. So we believe that's the most expeditious way to do that. We are happy to have any of the board with us at any time. I would suggest however that, as you know, your restrictions in terms of open meeting and your restrictions in terms of protocols and other rules and regulations of the board do not make the most expeditious, uh, use of time. And we believe that we have moved rapidly through a range of different options and we'd like to continue to do that. So while we look forward to working with you and we think the work session as an opening session would be great and to have your input on that, I think with the schedule that we have all volunteers, uh, would be very difficult for trustee Kelly's suggestion. So the committee would suggest we proceed with the, uh, suggestion of a work session and we make sure all of the trustees are noticed every year and they can come and visit with us because we'll be meeting weekly, uh, if not more than that. Thank you so much.
Yes, before you step away, if I could just clarify, you know, there may be more than the six pages you saw. Did you see the order of magnitude budget estimates that came from that firm?
I, I have to go back and, and look at it. It doesn't spring to mind. I know, uh, I remember going through it at that time and I looked at it pretty soon today. I don't remember it right now, but I think they had orders of magnitude some size there. Uh, and the difference between different estimates is nothing unusual. As we heard today, we saw a Westerman at the vice level, others of quite something different. Um, you know, you, you sing the song that your employer wants you to sing. And in this case, uh, they had a group on the, uh, who hired this engineer who had a target in mind, as I recall. And I think perhaps the best thing for the board to do was to call up some of the prior trustees and ask them what was going on at the time to get a fuller understanding of that report and what it was attempting to do.
So that being said, I'd say I'm comfortable either with the suggestion of trustee Kelly move forward here or alternatively we could have that public session, talk about, it sounds like even Lil Elise hasn't seen this and have an open discussion and revisit this at the next meeting, which is only two weeks away.
I think that kind of wrapping up here would be the open, the open session Frank's talking about and then who's then is in charge of disseminating information to all of us through the committee. Same thing, maybe that way we can work together. We look at committee St. Paul and.
I agree with Terry. At this point we can move ahead, but we're covering all the bases that everybody would like covered. So open communication, let us know when the meetings are. We want to see documents, early minutes from the meetings so that we're totally up to speed.
So the resolution could be amended.
If we could, if we could formulate a way, if we could.
I think we have to redo the resolution.
Can you say? All those meetings, all the meetings are being had.
All those meetings are, what am I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
So we had pulled off number four. Well, the problem actually goes back to how the RFP was written on the communication and it was the staff and the committee excluded the trustees.
Does Terry suggest that we say anything?
Okay, all right, so we can, um, make a motion to, um, approve number four and the condition that the trustees, um, will be holding a work session within the next thirty days to discuss the direction before we engage Westerman and that all meetings.
No, 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 no.
I think we want to appropriate the, be appropriate the funds and let's amend this so that we're all in this excellent communication for all of us on this, we gave you the reading minutes and also the, uh, any correspondence that got back.
And the work session.
And the work session. It's a great idea.
Work session.
You set these things and send them up all the information.
Yeah.
Right.
So that would be a total transparency.
So the, um, number four would be, um, move for the board authorization with the condition that all communication with the village will be shared with each of the trustees during the whole process and the trustees' meetings will be scheduled so trustees are able to attend.
Well, we don't want, I think, I think the, uh, the key point is, uh, they, we shouldn't schedule the meetings, but if we can make it and if we can't, we get all the information that took place.
Right.
Otherwise.
Send it out about the situation first.
Right.
Otherwise we may get.
You're going to give us schedules, a meeting, participation, then the meeting itself.
Right.
So you'll be documenting every session.
So I'm not a lawyer, but I think that what we want to put in here is that the Board of Trustees will be apprised of all meetings and given all, uh, correspondence and minutes from those sessions and, and will be attending when they're built.
Do you want to say that the process was going to start with the work session?
Yeah, I think that is.
In other words, we're.
Yeah.
There's a kickoff, there's a kickoff meeting.
Kickoff.
That's a good way of saying, it's a kickoff meeting.
Kickoff work session.
Which we'll have to notice as a work session.
And we'll notice, yeah.
Everybody's a lawyer.
I just don't know how, I just don't know how to word it.
Charlie, do you want to word it?
Do I want to? Everybody seems to have abandoned the first part of it.
Yeah.
That seems to be gone. It's, uh, Westerman is being retained by the Village of Garden City and the Board of Trustees and not by the mayor individually or the mayor's committee. That's the first sentence.
Why does that have to be in there at all?
Because we weren't being included in the process.
And I don't hire them, but now we're saying we will.
All right, so we just need some wording to make it clear that as we move forward, it's going to be, it's going to start off with a public session.
Board authorization requested.
So, yeah, that's, that works. Well, there's a.
We're just allocating the money. That's it.
No, we're authorizing, authorizing engagement.
Yes, that's most simple.
Right, but we can put conditions on the authorization of funds. And one condition that people seem to be on board with is before any work is begun by Westerman, the Board of Trustees will hold a work session that will be publicly noticed to discuss the details of which possible options should be estimated and to decide how the communication between the Board of Trustees and the Westerman. Can I finish this sentence? Before any work is begun, the Board of Trustees will hold a work session that will be publicly noticed to discuss the details of which possible options should be estimated.
Second, um.
No, let's face it, all the options. There are three options.
Well, you know.
The estimate is two options. I would say the other piece of the options, right? Okay, so why would you save that option?
Because.
That's why.
You don't.
I think, I think we're.
But there's a lack of clarity as to the facade option and I recently, well, it was developed ten years ago and it seems that the, a lot of people were not aware of the work that was done and I'd like to continue to have that conversation and go into this with what we really want to get priced on.
No, well, I, I think the problem here is that the word options is used and it should be not options because options in this discussion seems to refer to those three choices. And that's not what's meant here. What's meant is to discuss the details. Should be before any work is begun, the Board of Trustees will hold a work session that will be publicly noticed to discuss the details of which possible work should be estimated. That's it. Not that we're eliminating an option, but there are certainly things here that trustees would not vote to have estimated and that's what we need to discuss at the work session. I have made it clear to the St. Paul's Committee in small meetings and large that I don't think that the charge to the St. Paul's Committee is to fill in the open land. I believe that that's the responsibility of the Recreation Commission or the Recreation Department. I don't think it's appropriate when your proposal is to give an adaptive use for a building that you were then using the surrounding land for tennis courts, basketball courts, theaters. I don't think that's an appropriate part of the cost estimate because I don't think it's an appropriate part of the charge and I don't think it's fair to those who wish to preserve the building to load the estimate with other options. If the village wants to build a turf field adjacent to it, if the village wants to build a pool adjacent to it, if the village wants to build a theater adjacent to it where the cottages are, that's a decision of the village, Recreation Department and the Recreation Commission. I've made it clear to the St. Paul's Committees at meetings small and large that that's my position and we shouldn't be getting, spending taxpayer money to estimate things to put on the open land inside the E. So that's an example of work that at least one trustee doesn't think should be done and doesn't think should be estimated. So we want to have a work session to discuss details of what they're going to do and if there's certain aspects that trustees would not vote for, uh, we can discuss them at the work session.
If I, if I can comment, the, uh, I respect your opinion Charlie, but I don't agree with everything. I think the way to do that is, is make one of the options that you have in mind that you just described as an option to be, uh, priced out. And, but I think the, the residents need to know what could be and what they would, what they would support based on, um, what they're presented and what the price would be for what's being presented. To conclude what you're saying, let's.
Right, but I think it's, uh, I think it's what should be done with the building, not with the St. Paul's field.
Yes, so I think that we should include exactly what you said, just keep the building separate like you said. I think that the village should have the opportunity to look at what the options are. That's me.
Well, interestingly, my opinion is this. I've come to this with no previous intention. As an architect, I have to let the research develop. We look at the conditions, we come up with ideas and it's a process. I keep saying the same word all the time, it's a process. Right? So I have no previous conceived notions what adaptive reuse will be, what facades will be, what demolition will be. What I do know is that through the process of working with the committee members, the other professionals and now a professional cost estimator, we can understand how these different concepts can evolve. And I think trustee Kelly, right before going, you would include possibility of a, of a possible solution because you have to vet these, these scenarios individually. And then your architect will tell you, you have to look at all of these options and come in with a clear mind, a clear conscience and say, okay, I'm not influenced by anything. What does this building want to be? What does a building want to be? That's what the architect says. Then he does the research, does the analysis, and then we start getting the technical issues and then we have costs and then we have a project. That's the way it's done, ladies and gentlemen. The, after forty years, I think I've learned something. After winning awards, I think I've learned something.
Mr. Mayor.
And I want to advise people, this is the process we follow.
There is no change in cost and the RFP does not make it contingent on looking at one view or the other. The concept here with an estimator is to look at the documentation, look at the building and provide to the village and the committee the numbers. If those numbers do not work, they're excluded. Whether the estimator puts in for whatever other ancillary savings, it would not be a cost that the village is charged. I very much agree that this process should not be throttled, but in fact should be enhanced by making certain that the St. Paul's Committee is the one that is driving the process together through the village. The contract is actually between Westerman and the Village of Garden City. That's all it is. And the input that is obtained from that contract and that effort benefits the committee and the residents by fleshing out and answering the question, how much does it cost? We, at least I, do not know what it is. It has to be distilled down by having realized financial and responsible costs. As Mr. Elise had said, that you will have further opportunities to have cost estimates so that those activities or projects which are not financially viable are excluded. Trustee intervention, trustee efforts are all positive. But if you want to have a generalized meeting before the, the estimator actually does anything, it means like you're going to seek out information before they have not even progressed. So I think that the opportunity exists to go forward with the committee, those responsible experts who have called for a cost estimator and that we likewise have any of the trustees attend any of the meetings at any time that they are being held.
And I think once we get, uh, all the options identified, the cost estimator can give prices or the village through a survey or whatever, whatever we can best do in the way of a survey, they can pick, itemize. I'm thinking they could itemize and order which ones that they would select if that's the way to go. I'm no expert around that, but definitely as Ryan mentioned, get a survey once all the pricing's in and all the options are identified.
I was hoping from this, with this expenditure, I think the community is feeling that we're going to get some numbers that we could at least start talking to the community about and putting forth ideas to gauge interest. So it, it, I, are we not? Just that we can get numbers at the end of this process that, at least a base number for the adaptive reuse of the whole building, demolition and the some facade option. option.
Yeah, they're going to come up with a preliminary cost estimate for these options.
So I think that would be very helpful. As far as the facade option, this other report that just came to my attention recently lays out different facade options with advantages and disadvantages and cost comparison. So I think it would be useful to discuss that before we say we want a facade with the three sides. I think there should be a conversation for that and that's not really, that's more of a community than, that their job as trustees to be giving us the vote and here for residents and helping this process move in the direction that the community wants. So that's my concern.
So I would say put the school vote.
Yeah.
Sit there, we're going to go forth with the amendment and as was written with stipulation being, a little open meeting, open session with the St. Paul's Committee, with the set of people that are submitting, right? Put that out of public.
I don't understand that. I don't understand that.
What's the amendment?
We're having, we're amending number four to include that we'll have, what, a work session?
With the St. Paul's Committee. And the set of people will be then disseminated, all operations, no more meetings, nothing else, back to the board, everything is disclosed.
And what comes out of that work session will be our direction on what we are hoping to get from this process. Here's the purpose of that work session is to.
I have to clarify one thing. Initial work session, you're not going to get that. Initial work session is the estimator gets an understanding of all the concepts as proposed right to committee, right? That's, that's the work session, that's the initial work session. Now, there's a kickoff meeting, I correct you, is that okay?
We're talking about something different. Yeah, we're talking about our work session, which is something the Board of Man does, which is an opportunity for the Board of Trustees to discuss.
Do that don't got the kickoff meeting.
No, she, we call it a pre-meeting, but what she's saying is let's have a pre-meeting and just communicate the building process, it's going to change our.
I understand.
And I'm all for it.
And let's talk about what we have and where we want to go.
Yeah, and we can use it also because we're willing to spend village money, right? We can use this as a way to start looking at things because guess what? We open this to the village, we open it to the population. People may come back, but what the original ideas are, I would say, you know what? The idea of putting basketball courts, terrible idea, right? A pool is a terrible idea. And as a good starting point, trust it and deal with why this is going on.
It is, but I mean, the cost is what's going to make that decision, when they have the cost.
One hundred percent, but I think the thing is, is that as we look at different options that are being considered and we look at, say, the feedback we got from certain people in the village and some of the decisions that are taken, it'd be good for us to be able to at least day one possibly shortlist the options. So that again, we're talking 70 days, do a thorough analysis, 70 workdays is not a lot of time to really look at these three. So if one of the options comes back with, basketball court is terrible, it's not even considered, right? The other thing to think of is, is when we start thinking about it, particularly on the reuses, what is the real objective of how many floors are we going to use? As at the meeting last night, it looks like we're down in a position where we're looking at two floors, or is it three? So the rest are not there, so it'd be good to see from them, at least steer them at a cost per floor view, if that is one of the points of consideration. And given the fact that for the most part, that structure's not changing as is, things like O and M charges as far as cost, lighting, things, even the building hasn't changed, there's probably a way for us to estimate that quite effectively even today. We're going to have that.
All right, so we're moving forward with this, with a work, the Board of Trustees' work session first, followed by the kickoff meeting.
Kickoff's been struck.
Yeah, because we need to, we have to.
It's the language that's wrong.
No, I think we use the word kickoff to Mary's point, she just wants to communicate the process going to be and how it's going to work, and that's good, that's fair. I don't know how we can wrap the word, but I think we're all on the same.
Who's going to be there at that?
Who's going to be there?
I don't know.
Well, that's the whole idea.
The work session?
No, we can both.
Or the kickoff will depend on who's available, but I think the work session should come first and I think we need to discuss.
What is your understanding of that meeting that you're looking to hold?
I think at that meeting, we will be able to discuss as a group, the plans, the facade in particular, where, what we have from the committee, mayor's committee now, and those other options that were already, you know, estimated 10 years ago and whether, and given an analysis, so we can, let's talk about what we want to get a number on now before we have that kickoff meeting.
Other than the Board of Trustees, who's in attendance at that meeting?
Oh, it would be the Board of Trustees and it would be open to the public and I would hope that the St. Paul's Committee will be there and we will be discussing and will probably say, well, could we do this or did you see that? You know, there would be an opportunity for us to engage with the St. Paul's Committee and discuss the options in home and.
So if I understand correctly, we now have parallel tracks. One is not contingent on the other. You can pay for the estimator, you can move forward with the kickoff committee, and as any trustee can do, can make a recommendation or put a resolution together for a meeting. So personally, all we can do is we pass number four and we agree that on a date that we can get together, we have a meeting.
Well, I do.
But do we have a meeting?
Well, the problem with your parallel tracks is what's the point of having that meeting if they're already 45 days into their work and they're working on three and we realize that there's another option that's.
Well, I think it's appropriating the money without engagement, just. We have to, we have to engage money.
Yeah. The process starts with gathering the information, providing them with the information. The kickoff meeting does come with mission from the village. I can invite the committee to the kickoff meeting, but this, my suggestion is having the first initial meeting with Westerman and then present the, all the feedback at the next board meeting, once the people, once the information is gathered. That's like, the initial kickoff meeting should be with the village and I can invite the committee itself, but we have to get that process started, gather the information to give them to come back collectively with all the information.
We have to publicly notice that if the E Buster are there.
Yeah, whatever day you want to do it for.
That's fine.
If you want to, you want to put it together, I was suggesting it may be more efficient for us to have the.
Why not put on the next board meeting and they all see it?
Yeah.
Or a special meeting.
A special meeting.
We'll hold a special meeting?
Yeah.
I don't know that we can add a two board meeting.
Unfortunately, they're Westerman.
I gotta get them engaged, get them engaged.
I mean, have all this, so let's get to this.
Okay, okay.
So I, I made my suggestion. I think yours, I don't think the parallel tracks make sense. I think it's, we have to coordinate. You're saying we should just go and say, make of the kickoff meeting and we all come to it and we publicly notice it and it's a combination, you know, we're discussing and hearing everything.
I don't know if that's most efficient.
I think the Westerman.
By the grace of God, I think.
I, I don't know if that makes the most sense. Is it the issue, you know, like we may think we might disagree and we're going to be hashing out of this meeting, I don't know that we need to have Westerman.
You don't need Westerman. You need Westerman to get ahead and for him to start, right? As soon as a trustee wants to schedule a meeting, you contact Karen, she herds all the texts together, and we have a meeting. That's it. And then we get it as that to be the topic of conversation.
Somebody will take it in.
Right, the trustee's finding is the question is that the work session should precede the kickoff meeting.
Yes.
Because they're not on parallel tracks, the results of the work session will inform the kickoff meeting.
But I think there's a misconception. I think you're going to have, you think you're going to solve all the problems in the first session. It's impossible.
Can I ask you a question? Why do you think we think you're going to solve all the problems? All we're trying to say right now is we're trying to shortcut this possibility to focus the work that Westerman does, okay? In work that Tom and I do, before you bring in your consultants, you talk to your people ahead of time to make sure you don't waste your time and your money with consultants. So all we're suggesting here is that we have this public meeting with the village, because right now we've got people here, I'm unsure how it's going to work.
True.
Right? Willie even said before, he's like, look, this could happen, that could happen, right? He's not even sure. He scares me because he's got so much experience, but we'll get over that, no big deal. But at this point in time, all we're saying is this, we have a meeting, we talk through the options. Again, I think we should be clear on when we talk about the option for facadeism, what is it going to look like, where's the starting point for where Westerman's going to go and we expect them to go off and actually do the work. Same thing with reuse, same thing with demolition. We're all on the same page, then we do the kickoff with Westerman and away they go for their 70 days. That's all we're suggesting.
I think, on the same page, I think it's a good communication to the village on the whole process and where we're going, what they're going to do and what we think that patients are, right?
We're trying to.
I think that's fine.
So what's the motion?
So I think that the, the board can set up that, anyone from the board can set up the date, we count for that meeting.
Well, should we, should we go ahead, I just like looking at the calendar here, should we pick a date now since we're all here, rather than putting it to Karen, everyone has busy schedules and targeted schedules. I don't know if we want to do it like on November 30th, the night before the next board meeting, next week is Thanksgiving. We're not doing EA Day, we couldn't, our plan, we can't make it on the 30th, so.
I don't know, I said.
Obviously, the sooner we can do this, the sooner we can engage and seven, I agree what the mayor says, it makes perfect sense, so let's, we'll throw out the 30th, people can get back and check your calendars, see if that works. If not, we'll do the next available date we can all make it. And the, the issue then today as far as authorization will be, authorize the engagement following the work session.
My suggestion, Mary's, I think, I think what we want to do is, this is me, authorize, authorize them.
So we're, let's, and we'll engage them, okay, and the work session will take place before the kickoff.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, we'll engage them and the work session will take place before the kickoff meeting.
You took the words out of my mouth.
All right, so we'll move to authorize the cost estimator with the kickoff session following a publicly noticed work session of the Board of Trustees.
Sounds good.
All the favor?
I, no, it does not make sense.
Okay, so all of those.
No, see, you're, you're authorizing money, but you're delaying the process. Now, so since it passed, just hear me out, it really doesn't make sense. Yes, I'm pleased that everybody decided to go ahead and authorize money, but we've now said, okay, let's go stop the process. I don't agree with it, okay.
All those.
No, you, you already made the motion.
Right.
It already passed.
Okay.
I voted no.
I think we'll just skip, for everybody's benefit, including the committee, because we'll get that meeting skipped on the end.
Agreed.
Because I for one, I want to slow up the process.
I want to slow it down.
I can either cover the weekend, I don't know if people are going to be there, although no one will show up.
No, November 30th was fine. That's fine with trustee Kelly, November 30th. It's an even meeting.
Yeah.
But that's another two weeks then.
And he's available now.
Next weekend's Thanksgiving, so it's unlikely a lot of this is going on next weekend.
So enough authorizing now to start.
We are meeting.
We're engaging now, okay.
Kickoff is the follow our.
So the 70 days should start the fact that we're engaging.
Yesterday, yesterday, then he starts working. When he starts work, that's when the clock starts ticking. And you may have, please speak to me about this process. If you're familiar with it.
Well, again, you can carry through that this is a work session. Typically, a work session is a meeting in public that does not have public participation. Right. They won't comment on it.
Just to be clear though, at a work session of the Board of Trustees, could we ask questions of resident experts who have come from the committee?
Okay, with this, with the other items, and I hope you'll pull that distance apart, it's a non-exent item.
Can a trustee comment before this is a distance apart? Do I have to wait?
You go, you go.
I'll give you permission to go.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to comment after that long debate on a topic that's very important to be my favorite, on the third track, Main Avenue Project. I want to commend Village Administrator Ralph Swasey and Village Superintendent Chief and Earl for their work on this, as well as engineer John Veroni. In particular, I want to commend my neighbor, third track committee member, Paul Rothenviler. I think we'll agree that landscaping along Main Avenue, along Strawberry Field, Greenridge Avenue, and now Nassau Haven looks very, looks quite nice and a hell of a lot better than what we had. I would, however, would like to see where we are with the Main Avenue Project. I know we've authorized it to go forward and Ralph, maybe you can comment on that. I don't, I spoke to Treasurer Wu and she has not gotten any numbers or authorization to put through for the, under the community benefit fund money for the project.
David, do you want to use the comment?
Yeah, well, comment, yeah, because again, the residents are concerned and we have some of them here. I would think at this point, and you had mentioned Pratt Construction, which obviously is a very profitable company and the village has used them, that you, leaning in that direction for them to do the project, so why not go forward, give them the okay to do it and, and have Mrs. Wu submit for reimbursement of the community benefit fund.
So, no problem with the general concept of moving forward, there is a question of funding, which is still outstanding and unresolved. The community benefit funds stand as 1.636 million?
Excuse me, Ralph, but that's irrelevant, okay? I mean, we can still apply the amount, a rough amount of what we want to do with the project.
We can ask for the 1.636.
Yeah, we can, we can.
But it won't, it won't.
It, it doesn't matter what we think we have or not and we will have a doubt with them at some point over what they've been doing, but there's no reason why we can't move forward, why we can't submit for community benefit funds and get going on this thing.
So there are outstanding questions, I don't think the board's addressed yet.
Which is?
So there's, if you're going to look at a project, you want to know the cost. I don't know the cost right now, I have estimates on the road.
Right.
I have, I have cost given to me by third, 32 seats, basketball court, the baffles, what they're around.
Right.
I do not have any idea what the landscaping in the islands will cost, can't, I assume it's in the 150 range, maybe like give or take 25, I don't know. We still haven't asked any question of the, the floor, 26,000, which, which.
Yeah, I understand that, but again, that's irrelevant to proceeding ahead, to apply for community benefit funds and go for the project. That's, that's a different discussion, a discussion that we need to have. So I know the mayor has been asking Mr. Tavano for that information, I don't know if he's gotten it and it's ridiculous.
So am I asking for 1.636?
Ask for 1.663, what, what difference is there?
They're telling us that you don't have.
Well, I think they can tell you only one, we're disputing that.
So if I ask for 1.636?
Ask for what we think the project is going to be, because the, the amount of the project is now decreased because. Because of that, the, the amount of the project is now decreased because Three T C is doing sidewalk along the station, Three T C is doing the curb. So the project, from what you initially proposed, or was proposed, is gonna be less. So whatever that is, and, and sure, we let the board, I mean, I think that should be done fairly quickly, because I think engineer Veroni just had to make some adjustments on it. Send it to the board, that's all well and good, but let's get going on it. I mean, it's, it's now November seventeenth.
So, I'm asking specifically, let's, let's not waste any more time, given any...
Okay.
Are we doing the baffles, two hundred nine hundred thousand?
Well, that doesn't have anything to do...
It's a pro, it's a whole project, it consists of landscaping, baffles...
Well, the landscaping, yes, but you can still...
Well, the closing the road, you abandoned, are you closing the road?
Yeah, we banned it. Alright, we know that. We know that.
Closing the road.
The focus right now should be on, on closing the road and getting that Main Avenue project. After that, the baffles, which again, I think we should discuss with the railroad, because there is light pollution, and the MOU specifies that they would take care of that, which obviously they haven't.
So we're not talking about baffles, can I, just on the closing the road?
Right, exactly. That's what we're talking about.
Can I just, you know, if I could just, um, add one thing, 'cause I, I'd reached out to you last week about this, and my concern is, we've been talking about this for months and months, and I understand, I think December fifteenth is a public basketball, and what I had asked was whether you could present to us information on, I know there was thoughts that Three T C may do the job for us. Um, it may be better, you know, financially advantageous, but it seems that we're not going, they are not agreeing to do the job now. What's the plan B as the winter's approaching? Can we, like we did with the bricks at Nassau Boeheim, can we put in a request to the community fund? I believe we know what the cost of the project is, I understand we have the construction plans are completed, and plan to go forward with the work, asking for reimbursement. I think you're gonna look on, into whether we have funding for that now, so that we could go that route and ask for the reimbursement. I understand that there's some disputes, and, and that we may have, uh, issues with, uh, some of the reimbursement, but what I think the board would like to hear, I would like to hear what options we have for the residents who live up there who have been waiting for this project.
So, we, I will, I will ask Ms. Wu to put an application in for the one six three six, because that's all we can ask them for, because that's all that's there. Um, but the road costs, these are all estimates, so, the road cost estimate, if there's no base repair, again, we asked Mr. Passwell to identify what part of the work he's sponsored for, so it's assuming we're doing everything. Once we do it, it's gonna be harder to identify...
But we're, but we're not, Ralph, because they've already done the sidewalk, and they've done the, the curb, so we're not doing everything.
Well, sidewalk's worth about hundred twenty thousand.
It's a small part. Okay, it's a small part, but it still is going to reduce the amount.
Alright, so our estimate, our base estimate, Ralph, contingency is one three seven five. So now you have a hundred twenty one thousand for the sidewalks, if they completed as they said they would, we're down to one two five four million.
And that's a solid number for Pratt.
No, it's not, that's, that's an estimate from John Veroni, based on the linear feet of the plan, based on the prices that we awarded Pratt.
Doesn't mean the cost, right?
Well, it doesn't mean the cost.
Doesn't mean the cost.
It doesn't, doesn't mean it's the actual cost, because once you start digging and excavating, you can do foundation care, which, right, so it's, it's in the ballpark. He has contingency of ten percent, which raises the cost to one five two oh, a contingency of twenty cents, one six five oh. We don't know the, the contingency, we're not, the estimate on visual inspection of the linear footage of the air effect is one three seven five. So it's, like I said, we take out the one twenty one, which is the estimate, it will come to non-spend, then we have an estimate of one two five four, without any other cost considered landscaping and everything else.
Alright, again, you, I, it could, it could hold out that. I think it's definitely there, and I think this other shenanigans is kind of ridiculous. Uh, or put in for the one point two?
Ralph, what, what are costs do you have? Do you have only our costs?
The only hard cost I have is the one that Mr. Passwell gave me, and I just received it, it was just a spreadsheet, but the baffles, two hundred and one.
That's our cost.
Yeah, it's the only one I have the exact number on. I didn't, I didn't check it out.
Yes, you, yes, you have to cross the, the landscaping, right?
No, there's, well, there's, there's a question, there's a separate question of landscaping inside the closed islands, and then another request, that Mr. Rothenvilla's, or, no, no, there's, there's a supplemental landscaping which...
Or it doesn't, none of us in dispute, right?
The four twenty six.
Four twenty six is in dispute.
I understand, though, from my discussion with Tavano yesterday, he expects it to rise downward, but he didn't say, given any...
It should be more than downward, and then that's something that we have to pursue.
So, if we're not talking about that money, we have to present the money, just assuming the community benefit fund is one six three six. We, we, supplemental discussion aside, from that, we take off, we have the one two seven five estimate, we take off the one twenty one concrete that they're doing, we have, now we have one two five four. That does not include baffles, does not include supplemental discussion, does not include any landscaping sat down, and, uh, it also, there's a fifty thousand dollar credit Mr. Passwell wants to give us for asphalt damage, he says they've got in that area, which I think is a terrible number, but the numbers haven't, haven't validated, so...
Have, have we ever gotten the, we gave them a list of roads that we feel they damaged during the course of this project. Have we, have we gotten any response?
No, no, any response, no.
That's what, that's what I was gonna ask, I think. I remember the damaged roads, so they haven't given them, they're trying to say, oh, take this on, bring it...
No, fifty thousand specifically for Main Avenue. So I asked John Veroni, that means Terrence, who's the engineer working for Passwell, to go up there, because the fifty thousand dollars that he's offering for asphalt repair that is not identified just specifically.
Yeah.
It's, they may be at his unit cost, which is much lower, because he did a nine mile stretch track, and he had a lot of quantity, so the cost to us might be seventy five or eighty, I don't know, so that...
We have to get, we have to get their feedback on what they're proposing, or what we're, are we gonna propose what the damages, or are they gonna propose what the damages?
Well, the, the damage, they...
You know what I mean, right?
On the, on the roads, there's two roads, the Silver, the fifty thousand's the only main, the ones that Mr. Justice, Justice bring up is that, in the area, in the vicinity of the Third Track project, or in Tanahpon, all the way east, they had a lot of heavy vehicles.
Yeah, I know.
So they took, they took photographs, I believe, in engineering, uh, they documented the condition of the roads before they started.
Yeah.
We gave them a list of those same roads.
Remember that, yeah.
And we, we actually did a visual inspection, and we rated them based on what the starting point was, from all that survey to the, um, how could we, or two thousand nine, I think it was.
And so how do we get to resolution, so?
Oh, he, he's had that for three and a half nights.
Yeah.
Uh, and he said that, uh, we probably won't, we aren't ever gonna appeal the MTA, so I don't, we have no idea what he's, don't do that. But there are the damages to stone drains on Brixton that we believe was caused by heavy trucks.
Yeah.
So, I think there's a substantial number there, but this is different from the Main Avenue thing, which we started, but...
Thanks.
The Main Avenue thing, uh, if I, if I put in for one point five million, or the four one one six for the landscape and road in the Main Avenue section, I hope they're okay. They may not, because they might dispute that for one sixty six is still available based on the outstanding discussion.
They can, they can dispute it, but let's at least get the process going.
Right, so I still, I still need to have a, if they dispute it, I have no way to start, I have a...
Since we're speaking with Tavano and Passwell, can we go up the ladder a little bit?
We need to.
But that's the way you're giving it to...
You can give it to the railroad president?
Yeah.
That's it.
It's a business that...
The work last night, he asked for it, but, what I'm saying is that, actually, I recommend that, and the secretary was at our last meeting, who was the same secretary for, so the past president. So just, just to set expectations here now, it is getting cold around, it is getting cold around.
Oh, can you hear that?
What's that?
Can you?
It's cold.
It's getting cold outside, and, and the Three T C people are working, they're not finished, they probably will get in another two, three weeks, we can't go in there, so they down the entire neighborhood and co-work on some, probably the concrete or the...
Okay.
And probably the million paving and string, it's gonna be too cold to put asphalt down.
So let's, in parallel, let's broke the chain, and, um, we...
I'll, I'll reach out to, uh, Hector Garcia, he's on, and ask him to schedule a new, uh, present.
Yeah.
What I would suggest, though, is that...
Can we put in, and I know you need to keep interrupting you, but can we put in, I mean, we may not necessarily have to put in like the entire amount that we think we have, does that have to be done on one shot? I don't think that's...
It's our block.
Of the community benefit fund, I know the words may be...
I think we can ask, I think we can ask...
But, but, so maybe we can put in one point two now, and then the rest of it at, at a later date.
Well, I, I'd, I'd like to talk to Mr. Wu about this, but I think we can ask for a broad enough application that includes landscaping and, and the road, and, and ask for whole one six three six, or whatever, and, and, I don't think they'll outright deny, they'll say one point two. They go, the thing is, though...
That's the difference.
Yeah, you know, I would, I would ask for the whole thing, is they, they start saying, hey, that's not available, give one point two, that's a different discussion. What I would like the board to do, though, is hand you that decision, which I think will come pretty quickly. It might be nice if also you supply the equivalent funds in surplus, so that we can avoid the project and move forward, in case they deny the application, otherwise we're gonna lose another three, four days.
Okay.
And have to come back to the board. Uh, so that's, that's a way to allow me to fund you source, regardless of what they're saying. And, and if they, unless we get the minimum funds, you just put it back in the surplus.
The resident Ralph, Ralph, you have to have accurate estimates on the work. You can't, not even that.
You gotta get it out.
Yeah, hard, hard for us.
I don't want that now, here, but I mean, ask to go forward, I don't have accurate numbers.
Okay, but you're close to having after a conference at this point, I mean, we, we looked at it, right?
Yeah, well, you have a, you have a responsibility to... We don't have to get hard numbers from you, so...
I think a good start is go after the one point six and see what comes back.
Yeah.
If I don't get...
And you said you might, you might get it in a couple of days.
Well, I assume that they, I assume that we'll...
You're hoping.
I assume if we put an application in within the next twenty four, forty eight hours, that they would give us response to the twenty five.
Yeah, we'll see what they come back with, and then...
And I agree with you that, yeah.
Yes, she would do that, she's done before. We just have to provide the verbiage, which I think is important enough to be absolutely, because the entire project, we include the baffles and everything, uh, and then it's also an outstanding amount of, uh, living cyclopes, this, this, rather, Bill, uh, probably didn't talk about it in a minute, there's another thirty six thousand dollars there without the markup applied, I don't want the markup this way.
You said fifty thousand dollars.
So, so it's fifty plus, um, we need fifty more on here, so we do, we want point, uh, three million for some time, if you wanna plan those immediately, because they want to pull down the ground now.
Those trees, just the subject, or, well, we'll get back to that. Will Pratt give us an actual number? I mean, do you normally get an actual number from Pratt, who does all, you know, everything?
We give him the project, that's why it's an estimate, because when he starts working, if he starts removing asphalt, and his base repair is there, we have to fix the base. So, so that's why it's an estimate, that's why we have contingency. So we won't, we need to give you more than what we think it is, so that I can come back to the board and explain.
Okay, so will Pratt do that, and will they do that shortly?
Well, we can't start for another couple of weeks till these other guys are out there, and then we can, what we'll have is, so Pratt's doing some road work for us, the concrete work is done by his subcontractors, which is Valenti. So Valenti's doing some work for us, we can have, we, we, we agent with us, so those are out of there, and do the concrete work.
Okay.
But the order goes through Pratt. So the concrete work, I think we can, we can get this done before, the concrete work we roll through the wind pile if we need to, so we get the concrete work done in due time.
Really?
Well, I know what you're saying, we're, we're just entering into season.
Right, it's totally climate, in terms of freezing, right?
Cold forty.
Cold forty.
Right, right. We didn't have additives, but...
You don't, you don't have additives, just...
They don't have additives, and, and that's the temperature specifics.
If, if, here's how they caution. That if we ask, if we ask for all of the money now, we will then have a better idea of what funding we have, and what will be the issues that will be raised by Three T C in lowering what we have. Since we know what the top end is, ask for all of it. Three T C may say, here's the money, go away, don't call me anymore, and I'm not giving you any more trees. That could be a possibility. Well, the MTA, the only R is the one who actually authorizes the community benefit fund. Um, Three T C has a contract with it, plants the trees, and does some of the various work. Whoever gives us the money, then we know that we have X number of dollars, if we have X minus, then we know that the board has to come at a surplus, in order to complete the project. So the first thing to do is figure out how much money we have. Yeah, well, I, I, I think, I mean, it does make sense to do that. As far as the trees, and I'll let you talk, Paul, but I, what I understanding was, they were making a replacement for the trees, that they were not to be additional.
I'll put about the one point six million as a starting.
Okay, okay.
We've been talking for months and months and months about asking for one point six...
Say your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul Rothenvilla, two sixteen, can you just... We've been talking about asking for the one point six million for months and months and months and months, and we keep saying, Mr. Wu, you can do it, we, we can do it, but we don't do it. So meanwhile, the one point six has been deteriorating, so the longer we wait for they ask for whatever's left, it's gonna deteriorate more. The R A R has come up with asinine figures. Three hundred thousand dollars to take a two by two stainless steel bend, twelve hundred feet, three hundred and forty dollars a foot to block the light, does that seem reasonable to you? That's screwed into a, a capacity. The bushes, the bushes, eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and four cents.
That's a custom piece, custom made.
No, it's not, it's a, it's a straight ninety degree angle. It's a straight ninety degree angle, too.
Maybe we can fabricate a shop, Ralph?
Anybody could.
Most of us can only find this.
If I, all right, it's ridiculous.
They give us a very accurate estimate, and they can't dispute it, really. Uh, I mean, they give us details.
What I'm saying is, if we don't ask for the money now, there's gonna be another ridiculous estimate of what they can't do, and they're gonna take it down, and we won't be asking for that either.
That's right, though, the money's still there.
We've been told since the summer, by, Tavano told me personally to ask for the one point six million. I've come here every time, and everybody says, oh, yeah, we can do it, but we don't do it, and therefore they add more charges against it, and more charges against it, and more charges against it.
Eight, twelve months ago, we should ask for it, so, again, it's, it's, it's been a long time, so, I think village administrator Swazi knows now that we're asking for it, and treasurer Wu, he had the instructions.
And why do you think Veroni's estimates aren't estimates? I don't understand what we're saying.
They are estimates.
So what, what, what's your need to go forward then? Even if there's, there's certain things, you talked about drainage, is one of the items. We know what that is, why don't we start on the drainage? Why don't we fund that? Why, do we have a game plan? Has somebody laid out how this project should be built?
Mr. Rothenvilla, the one six three six number has been questioned for months, just, just October eighteenth, so we had a meeting in this room, where they, well, actually, it surfaced before, I missed it, first thing, you'd email about two and a half months ago for, go for four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, probably asked to sign something. So, the funding source for this project has always been talked about as a community benefit fund, and there was a question about that, it still is not resolved. So, if the board wants to give me village money to proceed, regardless of the outcome of those conditions, or the cost, then we'll, we'll back into the project. That's, then you have to give me the money and say, this is a capital project officially now, it's not a, it's not a community benefit project, it's a village capital project, I need one point five million dollars, let's say, and we will spend for one three seven five, the fifty thousand dollars which we want planned, and if we don't spend it all, we'll put it back in the surplus, and then we'll, we'll also sum with Henley, ask for one six three six, and we will leave the questions about the baffles and the four twenty six outstanding.
I have a very simple question. You need workforce, you need, and not estimates, but workforce invoices, purchase orders to pursue, to pursue this.
I need, I have, if, if I wanted, if I wanna give the board specific details, I would go into the estimate and I would allow contingency, because I don't, I can't say it's gonna be one three seven five.
But you're buying, you're buying, for example, the baffles, you're buying plants, so you need something?
Yeah, but they're...
For purchase order?
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to stand, we're bifurcating their request, if the roads are, then nothing I'm trying to stand, we're bifurcating their request, if the roads are, then nothing, we're telling them.
I don't mind the idea of knowing that you have a surplus to access that surplus, but you have to have invoices. You just can't have estimates. Do we normally have invoices for all the roadwork that we do? I mean, specific invoices?
We've designed...
There's a contract, we're unit costs.
We, we designed the roads, we picked the roads beneath it, we designed the work we done, and we're using the unit cost, we come up with an estimate. So this year, because of the cost of the roads, the exact cost, we have bought a couple of roads like Roscoe we couldn't afford. So, so the amount of roads we do, sometimes we get all done, sometimes we get extra done, sometimes we get less done because of what we find when we start doing work. So up here, that's the same condition exists, we have an estimate of 1,003,75. And John's got contingency in there, because when we do the regular road program, the whole program has contingency till we get through it. And this pick-up bond, now I'm just letting the board be aware that this estimate is 1.375. I'm going to ask you to give me more, so that if I run into problems, I can still finish the project. But we're just having these trains, I'm on point, I just need to get the thing started with the concrete. And drains, the drains, we have, for both the aisle, we have to move the drains along, it's $240,000.
John's estimate of 1.375 has been reduced in the most recent document that you just gave me this afternoon, and by what the MTA is...
By 1.21.
Right, so I mean, that number's coming down.
Right, but either way...
I have a document here that fascinates me, in June, at a board of trustees meeting, sent to all the board of trustees people from Giuseppe, explaining when this will be done. Everything will be done in September, install the landscaping, building, destructive planning areas. But August, the roadwork will be performed, Pratt Brothers will do it, all of this will be done by August, September, everything will be finished. And we're talking and talking, and every meeting we come to, we talk and we talk. And, and as a resident, it's frustrating that nothing can happen, but why can't we start the process?
Mr. Robinson, we revised the diagrams multiple times.
Pardon me?
We revised the diagrams.
Pardon me?
You revised diagrams, don't you?
No, 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 we've had this, you've had this since March. Yes, yes, and yes. And, and it's going to be the same thing next month, we're going to come back, and yes, Mrs. Wu could have asked for the money, but she didn't ask, and we will do it next month, we will ask for the money, and the railroad will say, no, we don't want money now. I'm sorry, I, it's just, I, I, I don't even know what to tell the neighbors anymore. Yes, yes, we want to do it, yes, you all want to do it, we all agree we want to do it. How do we make it happen? I have no idea, no idea. Try lighting candles, I guess.
We will ask for the money, I would ask the board if we can give the same amount of money in surplus, so that we don't have to worry about... I guess I know answer, I mean, this one. I can't, I can't give it work to the back, but I'll...
Do we have the money to be able to teach it, do it in surplus, and then ask for the money?
I don't have to do that. The, the problem...
Well, first of all, let me explain what the community benefit fund is. It's listed in the memorandum of under, of understanding, it's a legal document, okay? And what it says is that each of the villages will get 2.5 million, at least our village was going to get 2.5 million dollars. Now, we all know where some of that money went to get it down to 1.6, make Nassau Boulevard Station look nicer. So it's in a document, it's in a legal document. So to keep saying that, well, the railroad may not give it to us, it's in a document. And if they don't, then we have to do what we have to do at that point.
I'm not saying that, I'm not a lawyer, I'm telling you that there's a dispute, so the only money, the only money you can count on is the 1.636 minus the 426. That leaves 1.210, which is not a funding source for this project. I'm asking the board, we have the means to do it, if you want to proceed with, I, I need to, I just need a funding source by law. You have to say, this community benefit fund is not a funding source for me, because I can't ask for the money I need. I need 1.36, I can't plant the $50,000 for the trees, he wants to plant, and then give the road. Although, since we're talking about the late fall, the early winter, I could probably start with asking them for a million dollars and getting okay and do the concrete work, asphalt's going to follow in the spring, so we have time to figure this out. But either way, it's just easier if you give me the money, start the project, give it back, whatever we don't do, you can do it.
And Harry, to answer your question, or maybe I did, we're going to, we're going to, they're saying 1.2, which is total BS, but they'll have to give us at least the 1.2. Otherwise, it's illegal, they're violating a legal document. And even some of the judges that we had to deal with would have to realize that, I would think, okay? Well, let's get to it. So, let's... We'll work with it. For example, you have a hard number for the baffles. Can you improve the baffles? He, stuff the light, he'll spill it over.
Listen, so when I was looking at this, I, I did spreadsheet and drew everything that we really want. Except I had to estimate the landscaping, the, the 1.50, that'd be all by 25,000 either way. I included Mr. Robinson's bushes, I included the baffles, I included the roadwork as estimated, without any contingency. I come up with 2.1 million dollars. I assume I get a good portion of that, but where I netted out, if all these numbers are accurate, we're going to be completing about 400, 600,000 dollars in surplus at the end of the day, if the 426 holds. If it doesn't, we're only making about 250. So either way, we're going to get into surplus if we do the baffles and anything else. If you want to get started, what you gotta say is, close the road, let's get started, and we'll figure out the money later. But I need a funding source, because I don't have it. The community benefit fund's not going to give you the money to do what this estimate is doing. Except for the fact that I know it's going to be bifurcated by the season, so you gotta give us some...
So I think, you know, you're making sure we're not exposed, which is good. So I think, let's go for the money and see what we're...
By law, I can't...
Oh, I know that. You're keeping us at arm's length, which I appreciate.
But I can't give the exact number, I need is the estimate.
No, I know.
So it's an order of matters, it's in the ballpark.
Rough, call it progressive, so either Zoom call, conference call, or meeting, we'll, we'll try to answer that.
Is that excluding moving forward, or is it in parallel to...
I would...
Right, yeah, by the way, as soon as possible.
Yeah, what's the move for...
See if anybody's available.
I'd like to, I'd like to validate, Mrs. Wu, you should be on the call, Mrs. Wu.
Yes, well, can I suggest that the board authorize an auxiliary from surplus tonight to fund this capital project? The, the village has to pre-fund this project with, with some resources and get the work done before, if in the event that the MTA approves this project, we have to commit to paying the inventory vendors in the capital tax. So the village has to pre-fund this project regardless. So I would suggest, if there's a special emergency to get this project moving quickly, that we pre-fund this project in surplus tonight in order to be able to balance any project costs in this little research.
Pre-fund in what amount?
I would suggest the 1.6 million dollars.
I would pre-fund the exact amount of community benefit fund, knowing that if you, that should cover the road, the $50,000 worth of plants that we want to get in ground now, according to Robinson's plan by the playbook, that gives us 1.1, 1.30, I think, and then we can start on the baffles, we work out this a bit later, landscaping, landscaping in the spring, so we have time to settle those other things and see how much we need.
Ms. Wu, assuming the board pre-authorizes 1.6 mil out of surplus, how long would it be until you have the capacity to go back to the MTA and say, please give us 1.6?
I need to break down the top estimates and the, and the general work that is being requested. I have to fill out an application, this property, the project, the estimates, and there's a few other cross-examining answers. So I just need that information to submit an application to the yellow.
So if I understand correctly, on the board allocating 1.6 mil, they're just taking it from one column, putting it into another column, that then satisfies the law that enables us to go forward to then contract our work, but we're not going to pay for it until the work is done. So we're basically floating ourselves money until we get it back from the OTI.
No, we have to pay the vendor, I mean, obviously, but I like the government, you know, to get, ask the, to get the work, you told the vendor, you have to, if he doesn't pay the vendor, it's not...
We, we, we have to submit the invoice, and then they get the end, and we get the money back. The way it works is, we ask for the money, they say yes to the project, we award the work, the work gets done, they bill us, we pay, and we submit the invoice, we get the money back. It's almost like a grant.
I was just asking Terry, since that is finance committee, just what his thoughts are. So I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, well, what we're doing now, we're trying to rush everything through, and I get your passion, certainly, but also now it's, we've got to get this done, you know, immediately with the money, yes, we can allocate things at a surplus, but also we went from, okay, yes, I understand your frustrations, take your time, but now it's a gun ahead, let's get it done.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why we're taking any frustrations out on the, on the taxpayers. I think we should be applying to the community benefit fund, and this feels like a replay of the FEMA situation, where we were told that something was going to be reimbursed 80%, and now we have a huge situation on 80% of $400,000 facing us. I don't think we should rush into this, this wasn't even on the agenda. Application should be made to the community benefit fund, we shouldn't be moving funds around and suggesting that, oh, we're going to get them back from the community benefit fund. If we're going to get them back from the community benefit fund, let's get them from the community benefit fund. Let's not be fronting things because we haven't worked out, fronting 1.6 million dollars because we haven't worked something out with the railroad on the community benefit fund. Let's put in the application and move forward with that. Well, we can do that, but Treasurer Wu, do we not have to show them that we have spent this money? I thought that's normally the procedure with the community benefit fund, that we can't just sit there and wait for them to give us the money?
That is correct, they will not give us the money. We still need work in progress. The village has to enter the cost, take the bill, and then submit the change bill and capital tax to the railroad in order to receive the reimbursement.
Okay.
In order to require reimbursement, we need to...
So has that understood trustee Kelly, that we're not going to sit and wait and get the money? Because we're not going to get it until we actually spend it?
That's the way the process works, it might have been not very clear, because of all the discussion, but...
It certainly wasn't clear at Nassau Boulevard Station, that that's how it worked.
That's how it worked.
That's how it did work.
We put an application in, they awarded us, they, they, they said, okay, we're 1.6 million dollar project, we did a 1.1 million dollar project, they gave us back a portion of it.
That's the case, it's going to change, it's going to prove...
Yeah, thank you, Terry. So let's do that.
Do you want to suspend the...
Suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules, somebody to add this to the agenda.
Okay. I'll suspend the rules to add this to the agenda, that we apply, I mean, this has to be parted. Okay, I make a motion that we suspend the rules, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, I'm making a motion, and I don't know if I have to have part of that, that we apply immediately for the community benefit fund, 1.63, whatever should be left in it, and that we, out of surplus funds, start the construction of the project that may need... Anybody wants to add anything?
In the amount of...
You can transfer 1.636, is it going to help?
Okay, so we will transfer 1.36 out of the surplus.
Irene said 1.6.
636.
Is it 1.6 even, Irene?
636.
I think it's 1.636.
Or 1.636?
Whatever it is, we're going to match the...
Okay.
Also, can we transfer it into the road program, that's where the money is headed?
Okay, so as you said, transferring.
And I told you that, also identify trustee Chester, he had all this carry. I think we need to allot up to $50,000 for the Leyland Cyclopses, is right, Mr. Robinson. Does it mean broken?
I don't know why you keep pointing at me and saying the Leyland Cyclopses, $50,000.
But that's, that's, the area you want, the area I was going to the other day, you want to plant. About $50,000 of that should go toward the Leyland Cyclopses, landscaping along the platform.
Okay. Anybody vet those plants? Are they too tall? They block the view?
No.
To the platform? I don't see that they don't want any to come down. You're saying Paul Robinson, he's not a landscape architect.
We want a lot.
Is there a landscape architect, look at this? The landscape architect wanted five-foot-tall trees. The whole purpose of this is to alleviate the problem that the people that live in that area have, okay? And I don't see that the trees that are going there are any safety hazard or any taller than they are country, my press... I'm just asking a question. All right, well, that's...
There will be a condition according to Mr. Tofano that the village has to maintain those particular bushes.
Right.
Like keep that, Mr. Blake, you have anything to comment on this time? We have, we, we all have to have a big review of them.
Yeah, Leyland Cyclopses don't require an awful lot of maintenance, just an occasional pruning, and it's not beyond our capability to do that, we've already cleared it with our park supervisor, so we can maintain those bushes.
But just, so the planting will be conditioned on eventual agreement with the railroad that we will maintain. It's that simple.
Okay. So is my resolution done?
Um, if you, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, Irene, I just want to confirm, did you say the amount was 1.6 million? You would like them to take out a surplus?
Treasurer Wu?
I'll move it, 1,006,36.
1,006,36.
636, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your vote?
I have a vote.
A second.
You have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm opposed. Okay. Opposed. I think these things should be done not in a rush, they should be on an agenda. I shouldn't have to rely on representations, I should be allowed to review the documents that are relevant to this, and I think this is exactly the problem that occurred with prior votes on prior issues, and that's the reason that I'm opposed. Trustee Kelly, with all due respect, I do forward you the documents related to the project, from stipulation of settlement to our correspondence back and forth with the landscaper, our correspondence with Alan Pasco, that was all forwarded to you when you asked me to do that, initially after that.
Karen, I'm concerned about this vote, concerned about my vote. I want to make sure people understand that I'm really concerned about how this money is allocated. I'm looking for hard numbers, not estimates, and I want to make sure the village is made whole again. So I'm not voting for...
Oh, so you're a no?
I'm a no.
And trustee Kelly is a no?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, how are you?
Could I just turn your attention, Mr. Mayor of the Board, to Roman numeral eight? And with all due respect to trustee Chester, this really should be comment period for citizens and, you know, it was a 45-minute discussion that I found interesting, but I sort of agree with Mr. Kelly that, you know, it should have been...
I apologize, trustee Kelly, thank you. Not trustee, I'm making trustee, yeah.
I, I, I would be very brief, there is one issue that could be considered 1B to St. Paul's being 1A, and that's the cathedral. And I'm a little concerned that this board, and I think from trustee Marciano all the way over to trustee Trino, you are all sworn to, to watch out for the village's best interest. And I don't know, and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, whether committee has been formed, whether council has, has been hired. I have information from a good source there that they're not doing anything, or they're saying they're not doing anything. They've got the MTA there, they're earning some good money, renting the cathedral house property, but, you know, at the drop of a hat, something could happen, I'm not suggesting that it will, and you could have earth movers over there, and God knows what's, what's going to be, going to be built. So my question to you is, sort of along with the question, what's being done, are we keeping our eye on the ball?
This probably made this, I believe, in January.
Yeah, it was a year ago.
Then, Danny Williams with the dean of the church, discussing his plan, his conceptual plan for the landscape of the Oaks, and his comment was, I don't know, we divulge what is part of the chief. He said this swamps are secretly, right, it's part of the committee, and he said that's great, but I think as a village, we should... but I think as a village, we should understand what you may do with property. And he didn't give us a conceptual plan for the landscape, am I correct? He gave us a landscape plan for his property.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was trying, I was communicating with.
Trustee Kelly.
Yes, it was a, they gave us a, they gave us a master plan, which included a lot of trees, and they also had some gardens, like a listing garden, and so there was nothing substantive in regards to development.
I find that hard to believe.
You call it a historic garden, it was the original garden design when the church was built? So you look back to that original design, that's what shows. It was together, I believe it was put together by, by a guy developed, right? So that's how much I know so far.
But, but.
The garden had snakes and gnats.
I'm, I'm going to go home now, but I just want to make sure, Mayor, Mayor, I want to make sure that we, we have our eye on the ball.
Trust, but verify, right?
Exactly.
One of yours thought is that you can't have a bulldozer there until you have a permit here.
You got permission. Okay, okay.
So.
But.
He has one in his office that says paddle station.
But, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if those babies start rolling and then they, they knock on our door, so. I, I think, you know, forethought is very important. Thank you, guys, ladies.
I know it's been a while, I still see the lot, I still live on that street. Ralph, there's a sidewalk on the south side of Stewart, east of Clinton. We haven't driven down there in a week, but we, prior to passing it done.
So it was noted, it's, it's on the, it's on this whole floral list, Mr. Lodi. So what happens is, once we do our road program, the lengthy or subcontractor, the seprat goes in with the concrete, the seprat follows with nearly paving. When the road's done and we're finishing up West Innes River, we're finishing up, so Lenti's over, I'll lead next, and he starts the floral list, that's on the floral list, it was leftover, it should have been in last year. But if we redirect it now to New Marilyn Avenue, it might make it to the spring, but it is on the floral list.
It's, you know, it's been years, right? And if you go down there, the sidewalk blocks are completely out of the ground, and we waited for the construction work with PSCG and everyone else. I'm just bringing it up again because it's at least four or five years we've been talking about that sidewalk getting done.
What I'll do is, I'll speak to Mr. Roni to see if our own crew's going to handle the sidewalk work, just so we can get it done. And Adrian leaves right now, so it might not be till late November, but I'll see if we can do it that way.
And I know the horse is out of the bond with the, the money you just allocated, but I, I thought in the past that the railroad gave approval to the concept of the project, and then we went ahead and paid for it and did all that, with the understanding that they were on board with the project to reimburse us. And I don't think that just took place. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I've been going to the library board meetings, and month after month after month after month after month, the financial reports are not finalized. So it goes back to May now, where the financials haven't been finalized. My understanding at the last board meeting, that vendors have not been paid and the front doors don't work, and the vendor will not come back to fix them because they haven't been paid for the last time they were there. And it's hard for me to imagine that the village can go like six months without paying their vendors or finalizing the financials for the library.
A minor issue is that the library is its own organization. We have very little control over them.
But they say that this village has to pay vendors and finalize paperwork for that.
So, Mr. Lodi, what happened was, we, our council table person left, took a job to the library. At the time, we tried to negotiate the library to give us some time to get a new person to civil service. Employee didn't want to do that, the library didn't want to have a new employee starting on the bed foot. So we ended up with a multi-month process to replace the person. In the meantime, the finance department did step in and started paying what I'll call the priority bills. Our network and our communications, our garbage, Covanta, they were pulling them out so we wouldn't have services canceled a couple of times. We lost the communications over at station two, so aside from that, just so now they've stated that working with them, and PCG and National Grid to make sure that no municipal council gets canceled. We're getting canceled for a hundred and twenty dollar payment, that was 30 days late. So work on that on the side. Nonetheless, we hired someone on October 17th, so it's been about a month now. But as far as the library process goes, I'm not intimately clings with it, but before they approve invoices, they haven't approved by their board, so they kind of stay alone in the end here. The bill that we're talking about, the $6,000 for the vendor, we received it in September, September 18th, it's entered to our system, and it's, everything's signed off, they'll probably get a check this week. Had it been alerted to sooner, I asked for them just yesterday, to recall the vendor and say, can you please come out here? I'm guaranteeing the payment. We've been here 100 years, we're not going to go anywhere. It's ridiculous to have a communication lines severed for $127 from a government. So, so it happened, but we're catching up to it, they're doing a great job. And I just want to comment, find, compliment them because they're going to bug me down and try to keep up with these bills. We have such a volume of bills that, you know, without a person dedicated to it, give people something to do their own jobs, and order here and order there, and do these bills. So it's, it's been an incredible journey, but they're, they're back on these.
Yeah, I appreciate that background information, but maybe there's a disconnect between this board and the library board because they seem very frustrated with the whole process and the delays, and didn't really seem to, you know, know why, like the May and June financials at least, you know, haven't been finalized, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do also want to just, Mary answered, it's not an executive draft. We had a very nice conversation, as we were in the house, we engaged about this, and we, we were interested in assisting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Trustee John Walker, President of the Chamber of Commerce. We had an event last night at Adelphi called Garden City Connect. We had 119 attendees, 68 businesses. Don Clay, Laura Schaefer, and Edward, we had supports, this is the first event we've had in 2.4, two years and four months. We had there education, food, finance, legal, government, retail, real estate, medical, entrepreneurs, and insurance. Those were the attendees. Twenty-one of the people that attended were interested in opening businesses in Garden City. They did not have businesses in Garden City. As an update as to what's going on in Hoema, the old, as they call it, coast jewel location construction has started. Is Rattaway Coffee, as you know, you correctly, I forget the name you call it, but we call it Louis. They're, they're now staffing hospital. Burn Boot Camp, which is on Franklin Avenue, has been having its first class Saturday morning. Mighty Win, as you know, closed, Maceda purchased with the landlord's consent, the balance of the lease for that location. I don't know yet as to what they're going to do. Walk Street has just started, we now know the name, I won't try to pronounce it, it is spelled, let me see how he spells it. He spells it G-U-F-A, I'm assuming it's an Irish entity, so I, I'm not sure of the name. We had a ribbon company in LA Few, which is a medical hair restoration surgical unit. We had a ribbon cutting at Pure Momography that was yesterday, the other one was two days ago. ITA Kitchen, which is opening up Lucky Duck, just wants everybody to know, they know they're not in the village, but they want, want everybody to go visit. They've been in Bayshore for many years, they have an outstanding reputation. I sent Karen a request for the Christmas tree lighting on December 4th. I know protocols, I should have sent it in sooner, I couldn't, I didn't have enough information back from the people that were going to participate. This will be the 60th Christmas tree lighting, so I'm requesting that the board approve the 12:04, 4 o'clock Christmas tree lighting for the village. Parents, we couldn't put it on until 12:01, but I need to let everybody know before then. And I have moved the chamber into my office, I am at my wits' end as to how much I can store and put there, it's very difficult. I'm requesting again that we reconsider, somehow come up with a formulation, that we can go back to the tall house. And as far as the chamber business committee, I'd like the chamber to be representative on that, because that wasn't yet, hasn't yet established. And that is the end of my report, thank you very much for your time. But the big impending event is the Christmas tree lighting, because I have to get back to the dancers and the bands that have volunteered to come and do that. So if you could consider that.
But that doesn't stop businesses.
Say that again, Mayor?
That doesn't stop businesses.
It's the wise decision to make, so I will go forward with reaching out to all those attendees and telling them. Okay, I didn't say anything about that, thank you.
Kathy?
Who are you?
Kathy Doro for Marilyn Avenue. Just backtracking a little bit since Trustee, who's Chester reported on. The little road, I guess you call it a road, because there's a house on it, Magda Nassau Boulevard, Marilyn Avenue, and it's a one, one-lane road that heads into the walls and the train, that has been remade. And I, I presume it was done by C.C.C., I don't think it was done by the village. Right. Next point, talking about landscaping and the large amount of money and Leyland cypresses. Actually, I think Leyland cypresses grow rather quickly, don't they, Paul?
Yes, they can.
Yes, so that, that should be, that should be nice for the people. However, I'm concerned about the wasteland that I look out every day. My wasteland goes from the corner of Nassau Boulevard, where the elevator is. And then it extends that way. Plus the porta potty, forgot about that, there, every day, you know, every day I get my mail, every day I get the news, news day. Is the landscaping in that area included in this sum of money pertaining to your question about landscaping?
The landscaping right, right across from where you are in that area by the elevator? I'm not sure.
That's contract.
What's that?
That's con, that landscaping on contract.
Okay.
They have to help you put that landscaping in.
Okay, because they, they took it out, good, good point you said there, thank you.
So the railroad's going to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay, do we know what kind of landscaping?
We do, I don't have that, and what we do know is, it's on contract. It shrunk, tree and everything else.
Okay, yeah.
Who lands it?
Would, would you know offhand, are they talking shrubs, are they talking trees?
Well, I mean, I can't really say, oh, oh.
You wouldn't know?
No, wouldn't know, I need to look at it.
Okay.
It is going to be landscaping, it's on contract.
And how about that, those wall panels, that I can still see through? And, and you see all the gravel and everything, it's like looking through somebody's store door.
You mean on the platform?
There's a clouded glass.
Yeah.
Mr. Rock and Bill.
And is that going to act like a, a sound barrier? Because it's not very high or tall, whatever the term is.
I think it's strictly visual.
I think it's a visual barrier.
Right, so we're hoping the landscape will sort of compensate for the noise barrier. And my last comment. Being a mother of six children, I have very rigid rules and regulations. And I have noticed at our past few board meetings that people just come up and talk without raising their hand and being invited to come up here. And I would really like if we could go back to the proper way that we used to do things, that one raises their hand and is acknowledged by you, Mr. Mayor, and that we can come up and speak to you. As I said, I'm speaking as a mother of six children who ran her household that way. They didn't have to raise their hands to leave the room, but there was certain protocols.
You raised your hand?
I did, and you said, and everybody said, "Pat, hey", and so, so, and you didn't acknowledge me. But I've seen it all too often, and it was not just tonight, it's been at many prior meetings.
Well, I try to hold scripted meetings now.
Thank you very much.
I don't become much more rigid, much more demanding, and you're going to hate me.
No, I, I would never do that. But I, but I do think there's a certain process that is at a public meeting that should be followed. I don't know if it's in proper rules or any of that stuff, it's been more common to divert that. But I, but I do think it's.
The car is by the window.
Pardon?
The car is by the window.
Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Are there any other comments? See none? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, wait, is that, anybody on Zoom?
No.
Come on, let's go play. See none, I asked motion, motion, close, yeah?
I'll make a motion.